I forgot to push unmute on the mics, so my apologies.
So, start over, say everything the same way.
So, we have a, we have a motion for Lisa's the chair and we have a second motion for Lisa's chair.
Alright, do we need a role for this?
Um, I'll, I'll take role. Daniels?
Aye.
Uh, Kugel?
Aye.
Ollinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Sergeant?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Alright, and for vice chair, we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Karen Mori if she accepts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright.
Uh, so, unless there's any other nominations, I will take role. Daniels?
Aye.
I assume so. Uh, Kugel?
Aye.
Ollinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Sergeant?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, very good. And, uh, item four, approval of minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the January 24th, 2019 draft meeting minutes? Any questions, any changes? Any comments? All in favor of passing the meeting minutes?
We need a motion for adoption?
Um, I'll move it past, I'll move it through this.
I'll second.
Uh, unless there's further discussion, I'll take role. Daniels?
Aye.
Kugel?
Aye.
Ollinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Novak?
I'm not certain if I should abstain, I did watch the meeting. Um, I'll abstain.
Neely?
Aye.
And Sergeant?
I'll abstain.
And motion passes.
Alright, very good. Item five on the agenda, citizen comments and issues, not on the agenda. Do we have any citizen comments?
Uh, we do have one. Uh, Marguerite O'Brien?
Alright.
Good evening, I'm Marguerite O'Brien.
Good evening.
Some of you have seen me many times during this meeting, and some of you are new, and therefore, I'd like to give you a short history about the Philbert Run area. Our neighborhood has long wished to have that area known as Philbert Run turned into a park, and we have put our own efforts into, over the years, toward that goal. Seventeen full dumpsters and many volunteer hours were spent to change the area from a dangerous overgrown lot with six-foot-tall thicket into a safer area, and we appreciate the efforts of Phil and the Park Department in keeping the grass cut since then. Thank you. The area has a wide, open meadow and a peaceful grove of mature trees, and it is separated by a small runoff stream. The volunteers who worked on the space brought the community together. The older generation with knee or hip replacements worked steadily. The bad backs manned the sign-up sheet and the cookies. The hill and hardies did the heavy work. The very young picked a small rock of pine cone in their small buckets. The girls' scout troop made their goals of picking up fifty wheelbarrows of debris. Teenagers worked with their families, neighbors far and near joined the work groups. This brought the neighborhood together, and we would like to have the park as a gathering space to continue fostering a strong sense of community. Recently, the addition of a large new housing development nearby is adding a substantial number of new families to our neighborhood. Their lots are smaller, and everyone will benefit from a park. Phil is now preparing to apply for a grant from the State Parks Department. Our neighborhood would very much appreciate a letter from this committee supporting our common efforts of making Philbert Run Park a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to ask the chair to provide such a letter?
Uh, yeah, we can do that at this time, or under, um, other general business later in the agenda, uh, to the chair's, um, choice.
Um, let's go ahead.
You want to get our chair, uh, write a letter of support, send to the, the state granting authority, is that right?
Uh, to Oregon State Parks?
Yes, Oregon State Parks, uh, to support the grant application for, uh, the development, um, I'll say the continued development of, uh, the park.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Very good.
Unless there's further discussion, I'll take role.
I have some questions.
Yes.
What's the amount of the grant that they're requesting?
Uh, the amount of the grant is roughly $400,000.
And...
I don't have that number in hand.
That's what...
We are requesting.
What we're requesting, for the...
The Oregon City, um, Parks would be requesting, uh, a grant from the local government grant program, uh, with Oregon State Parks to go towards the funding of Philbert Run Park.
And do we have any specifics on what that funding would cover?
Uh, the funding would cover, um, uh, roughly a quarter of the cost of the development of the park. Um, the park is SDC eligible. As Marguerite, um, spoke to earlier, we've had a lot of new development in the area, and actually, a lot of development that have paid into the SDC fund, and they currently don't have developed park in their neighborhood. They're approximately a mile away from the nearest developed park in our, uh, system of parks, and so it's in a park division area. Uh, it's a, about a three-and-a-half acre, um, piece of property. It would include pathways, nature play elements, um, open field area. There's a nice grove of trees in the central section of the park. Uh, it also has a Nefirian, um, uh, creek that runs through, did I get that right, Doug? Excellent. Um, and so it would, uh, open up the park, make it accessible for all those families to be able to use it as a, as a park. Uh, currently, it's, um, an open space that has not been developed. And to add to that, we have a master plan in place to do this, so this is all just in support of that existing master plan.
So, will the $400,000 be, would you say 25%?
Uh, roughly.
Okay, and the rest of the funding is from the...
Uh, system development charges, uh, which, uh, are city...
Well, that's gonna cover the remaining 75%?
The remaining, correct.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
I could ask, I'm, I'm curious, have we had other parks that have gone through this grant process?
We have, uh, so the Tyrone Woods Memorial Park, uh, has received a local government grant. Um, the, uh, Kanema Children's Park received a local government grant for development. And typically with our SDC funds, uh, we don't have all the funds available to, uh, spend outright on development of the parks. We count on additional grant, uh, opportunities to, to help support that, that development. Helps to stretch the, the dollars a little bit, as it were.
Any further questions or discussion?
Alright, uh, then I will take role. Daniels?
Aye.
Kugel?
Aye.
Ollinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Sergeant?
Aye.
And motion carries?
Very good. Item six on the agenda, presentations, we have none tonight.
Correct.
Alright, moving on to item seven, general business. And seven A, that would be the PrAC goals update. Uh, we have two documents that, uh, have been handed to us.
So, the, um, the 2017, 2019 goals as adopted, uh, you'll notice the note down at the bottom, adopted by PrAC on February 23rd, 2017. Uh, we have an updated version, um, that was done. Uh, we received feedback from members of PrAC at the end of last year uh, to move towards updating, uh, the committee's goals for the 2019, 2021. Any of the additions to, uh, the previous goals, um, are listed in red, and I put them in the sections that I thought were probably most, uh, appropriate, given the, um, the language that was suggested. Uh, so at this point, this is just your draft goals, and, uh, feel free to, uh, alter, move around, ask questions, have discussion, uh, and, uh, we can move forward towards, uh, adopting. We do not have to adopt the goals at tonight's meeting. We can move it forward to another meeting to adopt, but it's, uh, an opportunity for you to discuss.
Questions?
Yeah, so I have some questions. I wasn't here last month, and I didn't, uh, listen to the discussion. So, um, just for a clarification, I'm wondering if, because of the current condition of the Clackmit Park boat ramp, if we want to minimize the wording on that line, number four, to just say involvement in Clackmit Park master plan, and, and boat ramp and the impacts, and not necessarily go on record i- in the way it would look here, that we're promoting the movement...
Relocation, no.
Yeah, the relocation, when, we saw a lot of things that suggested that's probably better, but I, I'm not sure we want to pigeonhole ourselves one way or the other, especially since we walked most of that whole conversation backwards, so, um, I, I'm not sure if that was discussed or not.
Maybe possible relocation?
The meeting last month, um, the, the group, because it was a smaller group, decided to hold off and postpone the conversation until this meeting.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Uh, no real conversation last month.
So, maybe change the wording?
Or possible, yeah.
I was gonna say, just put in, you know, including the possible relocation.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so item four, we'll now read involvement in Clackmit Park master plan, including the possible relocation of the boat ramp, et cetera.
I like...
Or elimination is what I'm looking at as, as an alternative, that we, it isn't a given that it's even gonna be in the park. And I would like to have that as a possibility, that it's either relocation or elimination, or the status, we just call it the status.
Well, and that's why I will, I would almost just eliminate the discussion of that in line four, because we are including that in the discussion of Clackmit Park master plan, period. Encompasses it, and then we're not stating any of those smaller ancillary elements in a goal.
Should we just say involvement in Clackmit Park master plan, period?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does the master plan, and you're saying the master plan involves all that, so essentially it's redundancy.
Yeah, you're right, right. That's kinda how I looked at it.
You, you could, I guess you could say, uh, to include any other recreational opportunities. I mean, if that's what we're looking at, completing a sentence of it, and... Because ideally, what we're trying to do is to maximize recreational opportunities in that master plan.
So, involvement in Clackmit Park master plan and recreational opportunities?
Within the park.
Within the park?
Yeah.
So, take off from including to other, take out those words.
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit uncomfortable now addressing the boat ramp in some fashion, because, uh, we'll be in that, we, we know, we know that, we know that there have already been recommended alternatives to what the boat ramp would do and so forth. I wish there was a way, I, I can understand the concern, but I wish that there was a way that we can make reference to the, uh, boat ramp.
Should it be a tone item, a separate item?
I just feel that that's probably just gonna be part of our master planning process, whether we include it or don't include it, it's just... It's not the sole purpose of the master planning process for that park.
I, I, I get what you're saying, Doug, but I'm not sure what it gets us by putting it in.
I suppose, no, that's okay.
It's the same, uh, subject, if you were talking about allowing, uh, camping in that park any longer.
Yeah, right.
So, it's all under the same umbrella.
Yeah.
Okay, so involvement in Clackmit Park master plan and recreational opportunities within the park.
Yeah.
I like number seven, I think, Bill, I like number seven addition. I do not like number eight.
Well, we...
We did pass a proposal on to the city commission.
Recommendation already.
You might have been on the minority end of that. Do you recall that?
Well, but, I, I mean, it, no, I remember the discussion, but I'm just not sure what it gets us here, move the city... Maybe I just need reminded of where we're at, then. Are we at the point where we adopted it, and now we're waiting for the commission to take it up, and they have yet to take it up, so this is just stating, please take up our recommendation?
Nice.
Okay, in, in that regard, I, I take back what I was saying.
I, I think, I, I think there'd be a good, I think there should be an alternative to move the city toward it, um...
Well, what's the next step?
Um, suggest that the city adopts?
Encourage.
Encourage?
Encourage.
That's a good word.
Yeah.
I think we need to encourage, but then I think we need to state how, like, what's the next product, what's the next step for us to work with, is that? Well, and the addition of the residential development part, I think's what stuck, stood out to me, because we didn't take a position on that, I believe, right, Bill?
Yes, right.
So, so, again, kinda like the other one, let's simplify what our purview is in this. If we've made a recommendation and they have not acted, we want to encourage them to take action on our recommendation.
And then my question is, how would we encourage that?
Well, I, I think you can, you can, that's a good question. I think, uh, you could take a vote every month at this meeting to re- reinforce our position. Um, you could go to commission meetings and advocate as a PrAC member. Uh, you could vote and ask, request that the chair attend a commission meeting to advocate for it. I think there's several ways you can do that, so I think having it on a goal, if that's the choice of the body, is, is, is valid.
I think so, I, I think we need to identify how we're gonna do that, though, otherwise it's not a goal, it's a statement.
And I would say also that, uh, it's to the, uh, chair's purview of setting subcommittees and additional work plan, uh, by product, so if there isn't, if there is an interest in further...
Advocacy.
Advocacy, or looking at any of your goals, I mean, this is an opportunity to refer outside of these meetings, uh, if there's interest. Yeah. So, so I would suggest that we change the word move to encourage, and then we put a period at the end of charter protected park, and then strike the last section of that sentence would be my...
That was part of the motion, I agree with you.
Encourage the city to adopt the upper yard.
Um, I, I might, um, so encourage the city commission?
Commission, yeah.
City commission.
Um, in adoption of the upper yard? Just...
I'd like to go back to four, it's, uh, it's a grammatical issue. Involvement in the park master plan and recreation, and, and recreational opportunities within the park. Um, I don't think that's a complete sentence. Involvement in, because you're not putting any kind of verbage in...
Advocate for the Clackmit Park, because then that's the action we're advocating. Advocate for the Clackmit Park master planning plan and impacts it will have on recreational opportunities.
Okay, that's a good...
Semi-colon.
Yeah, I like that word.
Well, I guess, I, I guess that's fine.
Okay, additional items of importance to PrAC, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I think there's still a grammatical issue.
Where, which one?
I'm still on for involvement in the, involvement in...
And I said advocate for the...
Advocate for.
Advocate for, okay.
Clackmit Park master plan.
And, and assess the impact, I mean, is that an appropriate verb, essentially, before the impact?
Advocate for the park's master plan and the impacts it will have on other...
There, there...
I think that's right.
And...
Yeah.
The impacts it will have, other...
Yeah, or including the impacts.
Yeah.
So, you're just leaving out including relocation of the boat ramp?
I'm, I'm still gonna be a bug on this. Advocate for and advocate for the impact, that's not what you're doing.
No, advocate for the Clackmit Park master plan, and...
Yes, and there should be a verb, if, if the advocate, if the advocate's gonna be there and cause the advocate, would advocate the impact, and that's not what we're doing.
Advocate for involvement, is that what you wanna leave the involvement in there?
I know where you're coming from, Doug, I, without a verb in there, you're advocating for them both.
Um, advocate for the completion of?
That would work.
Completion, do we want completion or, uh, moving forward with, maybe not completion, but, um, moving with option?
Well, if you'd put something like this, assess the impact or something, there's just not an appropriate verb that we've got in there that follows the impact, and not advocating the impact.
Advocate for and assess.
Correct.
I, I like Doug's point there, if you read it that way, because you're saying, we want to advocate for the Clackmit Park master plan and assess the impacts it will have on other recreational opportunities within the park.
Yeah, okay.
That would be appropriate.
I was thinking you were putting assess at the beginning, but now I get it.
Yeah.
Plus Phil gets to watch this back.
I was gonna say, I, we reviewed this a couple times, right?
Sean's last...
We'll see, we'll see the next verb, right?
You will.
Um, additional items of importance to PrAC?
Do we want to state that we have to have PrAC members attend neighborhood association meetings? I mean, it's a good point of advocacy, but is it a...
How about suggest or encourage PrAC members to attend?
Well, we are the PrAC members with the goals, so it kind of assigns the responsibility to somebody else instead of ourselves taking the responsibility to do this.
Yeah, I just thought it would be a goodwill gesture.
No, I like the idea.
And also education for the neighborhoods, a presence.
I, I, the, the other issue I have with it is if I was the chair, I, I don't have the time. You may, but, but I'm putting my own hat on, if I was the chair, I don't have time and to attend that many, and, um, do I want to put that on you? And, or are there other volunteers that are also going to go out and advocate and help? Help you in that endeavor, so...
Well, it would be once per quarter.
How many associations do we have?
Thirteen?
Is it thirteen?
Maybe twelve?
Twelve, okay. Uh, my thought, I mean, and I, I understand the commitment level here, but I also think the, the intent of this is, is really good. What if we worded in a way that was maybe more reasonable, something we could all manage? And maybe we create some sort of, uh, each of us would act as a liaison with the association. So, we make ourselves available, not committing to once a quarter, but make each of us, because it's either one or two per member, right? Nine of us, twelve of those, right? So, one or two each, and then somehow maybe Phil or whoever, whatever appropriate, to let them know who is their liaison, and then they can contact us, but now we're, we make ourselves available. So, we're not committing to a certain number that maybe we can't do, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think when I, that's a good point, Tori, but I think when I first, uh, thought of this in my head, we would rotate, so it would be once per quarter, maybe two of us, one or two of us rotate once per quarter. So, really, it's not that, that many.
But once per quarter, it'd go to twelve of them?
No, to one, rotate.
So, it's gonna take us three years?
Yeah.
Oh, just...
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm understanding, so one person goes each quarter?
One or two individuals.
So, it would take us two to three years to get through everybody?
Possibly, yeah, mathematically, but it's not too much of a burden.
No, it's not, my thought is, if we acted as a liaison, then that may be different for each person, but, um, if we're doing one per quarter, then that usually would be an assignment of once a year.
Yeah.
Right, it would come around to you, and if that's all we can do, then that's what we, then that's what we do as a liaison.
That's what I thought would be realistic.
Yeah.
And the, the one dilemma I have with the liaison, it's having, um, it's, we're coming to the neighborhoods rather than having the neighborhoods take time to come to us.
And, and I just threw that out, we could, whatever word that is, and maybe it's each of us reach out to them and say, hey, I'm here for you, what can I do to help, and then with that person you reach out, and I honestly, I think that might be more, uh, personal and more effective, because they know, they have, not have to, they get to call me. They don't get to call Phil and say, who can you send out next quarter, right? But call me, and tell me what you need, and I'll work with you and see what I can do.
Just had a, kind of a broad question, I, I agree with him, I like, I like the intent of this. Um, what about CIC? And my own personal involvement is, has been pretty low with CIC, so others that are more involved with CIC could PrAC have a little more, um, input there, and then that get disseminated back, that would be one method. And then the other method I could think of would be, not all neighborhood associations currently probably need our involvement, but others may, such as, their neighborhood should be receiving a new park in the next year or two. Maybe they would appreciate some PrAC involvement and discussion at, at the table. Uh, same with, um, Coffield with Tyrone Woods Park. Maybe somebody participating there and telling them, hey, here's what's coming, and that way they don't get that feeling, we never hear anything from the city, would be beneficial. Kind of throwing out two broad topics. I liked, you, you used the word encourage, and I think even if nothing else, if you started off that sentence, encourage community involvement, because that's your goal.
Mm-hmm, well, and also I thought, because we have a lot of information on our website, and people from time to time ask me, how do I find out what neighborhood I'm in, or who represents me? So, again, we're asking people to come to us, and I thought to reverse and have us come to the neighborhoods.
I agree, and I, I, maybe we could put on...
I agree. And I, I, maybe we could put on here, and I, I like, I don't like the word encourage for a goal because encourage is not measurable. In fact, I have a side note on that that covers all the goals, but stick to topic. Maybe we put something on here that. Is what we're committing to. In fact, I would suggest we even move this up to a goal and not, but not an area, an item of importance. But say that Prak will assign one member to reach out to each, um, association. So now that, and that's trackable. Have they been assigned? Yes, they've been assigned. And we could even go one step further, be assigned and then the Prak member will reach out. That doesn't commit anybody, it doesn't commit the association to need us, right? They don't, they don't need us, they don't need us, but it doesn't commit us to show up to every meeting every month either. It can be worked out with, like Sean says, what each association needs. I think we have to have it on there for, in some form or another. I mean, this is, this is going to the city, going to our people and finding out what they want and this is a great way to do it. So I personally, I think it has to be on there in one form or another.
Any other comments?
So do we have, um, clarity in moving it, I think Troy suggested.
You didn't pull clarity out of all that, is it?
To move it up to a, a goal as opposed to an item of importance and to add, uh, to assign each member one or two neighborhood associations. To which they will reach out and, um, introduce themselves and offer their support for future conversations.
I, I think that, um, as we asked the applicants today, are they available to, um. Attend extra meetings? For example, we may be talking about a levy coming down the road. And certainly we would be some of those proponents of that and we'd want to get out to the neighborhood associations to do that. And we'd all be available, make ourselves available for that kind of, uh, activity.
Good point.
And I think if we, if we take the responsibility as, uh, the advisory committee to assign ourselves to that association. That when those come about, a levy, an individual need, a park, whatever, then it, it becomes our responsibility to do that.
And what I also think is we should go outside of our own neighborhoods. In other words, I would go to, uh, something other than park place neighborhood meeting. And we would rotate outside of our own neighborhood.
I can see the value in that. I also think there might be some value in, in, in within your, I mean, we're, the way Prak is made up is it's representative of each association. And so maybe if we stick with our association.
I agree with this.
And just be in our neighborhood. But I see the value there is not staying in your own home all the time, right? In someone else's backyard, but.
Some of us on Prak already are on the neighborhood association.
Yes, which I guess just means you have to, I don't know, still make that contact and say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling two, I'm, I'm wearing two hats now.
I think so too.
Okay.
I mean, that, that would be okay if you're already on the association and that's your neighborhood, then that would make it a little bit easier for you.
You're in a better position to know what that neighborhood needs and then you're there also as a Prak representative. I think it's a, a better fit.
And there's potentially, we are potentially avoiding a perceived conflict of interest of your association wants this from me, but my association wants this too. And now I've gotta go deliver your message and my own, right? And, and it may be more of a perceived conflict, um, but it avoids that.
Okay, okay. All right, so. The consensus that I feel right now is that we will move this to a goal, goal nine. This topic. And we will assign two members from Prak to visit neighborhood associations on a quarterly basis. Possibly more frequency.
You don't always have to be the same members doing that.
I thought we came away from that and we were going to be assigned based on our own association.
Yes.
You said per, two of us are gonna be assigned per quarter. Which is the way it is on here, but I, I was.
Two of us would go each quarter to the neighborhood, to, um, in their respective neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm not understanding. It sounds like, that sounds like we're back to where, the way it's written.
Okay, how, how would you like to have it written?
I think that to make it a trackable goal, that we say that Prak, each Prak member will be assigned to a neighborhood association. To attend meetings and listen to their needs.
On a quarterly basis.
I wouldn't say a timeframe.
I wouldn't say a timeframe.
Because you're, you're there every month. I may not be able to do that every month, but I could do it.
They usually only meet once a quarter.
Or, and that would be fine, but, but if they have additional needs.
Steering Committee meets every month.
Yeah, and if they have additional needs, that's for more, but then there's some associations that, that aren't that active and aren't that involved and they don't need you every quarter. So I don't wanna commit ourselves to something that they don't need.
So we don't want it to be once a year or once every two years either. So we, I wanna have some sort of.
Well, then maybe we put minimum once a year, minimum twice a year, but again, if I've, I mean, granted it's my own neighborhood, but if my neighborhood association said, hey, we don't want a Prak person here, we don't need you, stay away. I'd respect that.
Really, is this a goal or a rule? And when, the more we start defining that, it feels like a rule.
Okay, all right, so leave that open.
And I think if, uh, for example, if I was the chair and, and I'm advocating for this goal, I would be, hey Troy, how's it going in such and such neighborhood? And lean on him if he hasn't done anything in a year and a half. You know, but, but that, that I think would fall back on the chair to, um, en- encourage the, the development of the goals.
Okay.
We, we recognize not every neighborhood association would be re- representative too.
Correct. And we, yeah, and then that's where we have to, I, that's why I don't think we write that in the goal. But we have an understanding that would probably be ideal and there will be some crossover.
My objective was a goodwill gesture.
Yeah.
That was my objective.
And I think it's great. I think it needs to happen. You got all that, Phil?
Oh, yeah.
And frankly, you could, you could even work some of the refinement on that in email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll offer a suggestion and feel free to.
It's enough for a second draft, right?
Yeah. Try and put something together.
Yeah, just keeping in mind, my original thought was, you know, goodwill.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, how about dog off leash areas?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that one. Um, I don't remember where we're at on the evaluation.
Yeah, we established a subcommittee, which by now I'm sure is, I know for sure Lisa was on it, cause she's always advocated for, for dogs. We did not, we have not met. And for life of me, I cannot recall the second person that had committed to that group, so.
Did we do a survey?
Um.
We did do a survey, didn't we?
We finalized the survey. It has not gone out and we were going to, uh, meet as a subcommittee to kinda. Tweak the, uh, the hows, whose whats and, uh, the evaluation of the survey. So that has not, that has not happened, but we can, um. Maybe initiate a subcommittee and dig a little deeper in that discussion.
What I would suggest, it's been what, two, three, two years at least now and I am unaware of any. Problems or issues, maybe anything minor, minor issues. My suggestion is that we get the survey out. And go ahead and finalize this and make it a permanent.
Will we see the survey before it comes out?
Yeah.
So let me bring it back around to the goals. I think that's a good line. And then let's, uh, under other topics, discuss the dog park. Evaluation. But I mean, I think for this. It's fine. It's still valid. That's what I couldn't remember if it, how valid it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems to be a popular, popular thing. Um, so the fourth bullet?
And you'd need to strike that one, don't you? Because you moved it to number six.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we can take that down.
Oh, no, you should, I.
No, that's different, that's funding.
I think you should combine them.
Funding has been, should be moved up to, certainly, um, that was also identified for Glen Oak Park was moved up to the goal and that's certainly where this belongs.
Yeah.
Is funding and perhaps naming a Filbert Run.
How long does it take to name a park?
Four, five months.
Then why in a two-year period for goals are we only initiating it?
Um, so at, two years ago, I think we believed we were going to do both parks.
Right, but why don't we just change this to complete the formal naming process? Why, why are we initiating it over a two-year period?
I see what you're saying. I think the, the conversation was around, uh, building hype on a park that we don't have funding to complete. So initiating the, um, the naming process as we know that we have funding to complete the park. It was, was the original conversation that, that we had had as a group in.
But we're past that now, right?
Uh, for Filbert Run now.
Well, I guess let me ask it this way. We can name the park before we completely know about funding for development, right?
We can.
So again, my question is, why don't we just finish the formal naming process? Two-year period to initiate something is a really long time.
I, I think it was that the funding is not guaranteed and that we wanted to, um, initiate the funding, I'm sorry, the naming process when we knew that we had guaranteed funding.
It can be in the same sentence. It's just that we're talking about one park and you can initiate the naming and you can get the funding as time allows.
While we complete the naming and identify funding.
Same difference.
Well, no, it's not. One starts it and one finishes it. That's a whole lot, that's a big difference.
So the suggestion would be to take number six and start it and, and strike the word initiate and start the sentence with complete formal naming process. And then to move up the funding. Of that park.
And that's initiating funding for it.
Yeah.
Well, the formal naming part's already done, right?
No, that's never been touched.
No, it's, it's known as.
It's still outstanding. Yeah, that, that's the street it's on. But I think those should be combined, cause that's the next big project.
Yeah, um, so I have a complete formal naming process for a park known as Filbert Run and identify funding for construction in the park.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, final bullet.
We have this on here for seventeen through nineteen. So has anything been done about it?
Uh, we have a couple of different projects. Lisa might be able to speak to the, um, Park Foundation.
Workin City Parks Foundation, we've, um, planted a zero scape garden at Pavanad Park. Native plants. Um, encouraging pollination. The plants were carefully chosen and the money that came, um, for that park was through a grant. Um, believe we're also going to be starting up outside of, um, the Pioneer Center. There's going to be a small area that planting will be done and that will also be, that's something we're trying to work into our schedule. Um, so the Parks Foundation has been active with that.
So why did we choose that park to start with? Yeah, why did we choose that one?
It's the gateway.
Our key.
The gateway to.
Gateway to the McLaughlin Neighborhood. It's a popular trail. It, um, tourists, it's a, um. Gateway to the city from a tourist perspective.
And then why do we choose the monarch butterfly?
Because they're endangered.
Okay. So that's just one thing.
It's a national initiative amongst, um.
Oh.
Agencies.
We're following the national initiative.
National Recreation Park Association.
So then my question would be, what would be the next steps to support the inclusion of that? Support is not measurable.
We do have, um, so the DC Lauterett Park and part of the design for that park includes, uh, habitat as well. Um, if you're looking for measurable, um, you know, we could look at, you know, something that, something that we struggle with. As staff is that, uh, you know, not having as many staff members to maintain some of these planting areas is difficult. And so internally as staff, we, we tend to, unless we are partnering with outside organizations, we tend to not put in a lot of, um. A lot of garden beds, things like that, uh, that require additional maintenance hours. So, uh, it's, it's difficult for us to. To initiate that process. So it might be something where we're advocating for. Organizational support for. Supporting, you know, maybe one native habitat in, you know, the next year, you know, each year we try to initiate a, another. Organization that'll help support, uh, as a suggestion.
Then I, I mean, I, we can't, there's a lot of things that are endangered, that need to come back, that are native, like there's a lot, and I, and I'm okay picking this one. Uh, because we're following the national initiative, that makes sense. Um, however, support is not, is not trackable. It's not, i- i- it's not, um, a trackable goal. And so I would say if we're gonna, if this is important to us and we're gonna do this.
So it's not a goal though, is it?
It's not a goal.
It's not a goal.
Hang on, hang on. I got the floor. And so, um, I would suggest that we take this and identify how we want to support the inclusion. And then make that the item of importance.
Letter of support when organizations are applying for grants.
So then, then I'd say let's put that in the wording would be my suggestion.
And that's not limited to letters of support. It could also be part of our community outreach when we visit neighborhood associations.
Then let's put that in there too. Because those are trackable.
So let me throw out a different side to this though. In two years as a Prak member. And the key distinction is Prak member not as any involvement with Parks Foundation. I did nothing to advocate or support the inclusion of a monarch butterfly. And as far as Prak meetings, this discussion never came up. So I'm wondering as we come up with our goals and additional items of importance, is this really important to this body? Or is it an Oregon City Parks Foundation goal of importance?
And I agree with that, cause based on action over the last two years, we don't support the inclusion of monarch butterfly.
So are we saying, so are we saying that we would not write a letter of support for the Workin City Parks Foundation?
Not at all. No, I'm not saying that at all, but we also don't have a, uh, importance that we're going to write a letter for Filbert Run development and we just agreed to do that.
Right.
Because that was asked of us. So we certainly can do that, but over the last two years, we've done nothing to support it? So why are we having on here to support it? And we can't, doesn't mean we're against it, but why put an area of focus if we didn't focus on it?
That's my key is why, why highlight this one particular? Is it really that important that it should be here? Then we should have really done something in the last two years.
Oh, yeah, we draw the letter of support for it.
But again.
And we'll do that anyway.
We'd do that anyway.
No, I'm sorry, but we did do something.
It's, it's a case really whether you wanna elevate this issue to, to, to that kind of level. Um, I think you do. The, um. It's, it's not only a poll near habitat, uh, I think according to Roger, the, the specific plants the caterpillars feed upon. Are very specific and there, there are really no areas where these are and I'm sure some of our parks in fact, could, uh, in fact have the areas. Planted the milkweed, which is the, which is what I understand what the caterpillars feed on. And, and it, it is an endangered species and I think it's one of the reasons it's specifically called out here. But they, this particular species also needs to have places where it can get its nectar. And those are the, and those are the pollinating plants, not necessarily the same plants that eat larvae. Uh, I, I, I think, I think we have, um. An endangered species, especially one that used to be, I haven't seen them a lot. I haven't seen them a lot.
No, I agree.
I think your, your point about not having done it in the last two years, why is it important is probably relevant, but I also think that it's an important goal. Or something important to this committee for the next two years. So I would, I would support its inclusion in, in our. Uh, items of importance for this next two years and let's make doggone sure we do something about it.
And then that was the reason, my first question of what are we gonna do about it? And let's put that on here. Because from a, from a community member to see this. I'm not looking at this going, wow, that's really important to that. What I'm looking at is saying, yeah, that was important to them before too and they didn't do anything, right? So let's be more specific. Let's learn from our error of just supporting it and take that and say, how are we gonna support it? And let's put that on there.
I, I think, okay, I'll, I'll try something. I I think, okay, I'll I'll try something. Identify parks in which the habitat could be created to support the delisting of the monarch butterfly from the endangered species list.
In pollin- well, pollinators basically what we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's not only pollin- my point is not only pollinator. But it's not only pollination, it's also the rearing.
Basically designed for no spray areas is what it's designed for.
So Doug said it again, identify parks which.
In which habitats can be created to provide for pollinator habitat and rearing.
Endangered species?
Of what I was gonna say, I mean, uh of the monarch butterfly. I mean, I think we can be specific about it.
If we're if if we're gonna put on there to identify, that's trackable. Because we at the end of the year, we can say, did we identify? And we we have a list. Here's what we've identified, right? It's trackable.
Yeah.
Now, we may or may not do it, meaning we may fall short of a goal, but at least it's a goal of something we need to do. And I can support that a whole lot better than just making something look good on the paper.
Yep, I like that.
All right.
Nice consensus.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
What else? Anything else?
I have a couple of thoughts. Can I share those?
Sure.
No.
And I've alluded to this already, but I have a couple. I have a couple of issues with our goals. Um overall, most of them I have a really difficult time supporting. Um with just a couple of exceptions. The reason I have a difficult time, well, before I say that, because I'll tell you that. But also on other committees I've had that I've been on that have had goals, I've had an equally difficult time supporting almost all of those goals too. And it all comes down to two things for me. Trackable. To me, a goal has to be something that at the end of the period, we can put a checkbox and say, I did it. And support, we can't. Continue to advocate, there's no checkbox. Because at the end of the day, two differing opinions on something can look at, continue to advocate and say, no, you didn't. You only wrote a letter. And someone else is going to say, yes, we did, we wrote a letter, right? But if the goal is write a letter in support, we can both agree that that happened, right? Because it's trackable. There isn't, it's not left to opinion. Did you go to the gym five days this week? Checkbox or no? Try to go to the gym more often? Well, I thought about it more than I did yesterday, so checkbox like. It's it's so that's the problem I have with goals in general is what's most of what's on this page are not goals. They're ideas and thoughts that we're putting out to the public that the public cannot hold us accountable to because nobody can check a box to say it's done. The other problem, the other issue I have with goals is when they're two years in length. Because it doesn't, there's eight things on here that we have to think about doing and supporting and talk about for two years. But if we had eight things on here that we had to accomplish in a one-year period, we can all look back at that and the community can feel good about the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee to say, wow, they decided to do these things in January and in December they were done. That's a group that works. Now what are you gonna do next year? So I have a hard time supporting them as they are because to me, it's a lot of fluff. It's a lot of look at to the citizen, the community, look, look what we do. I know it's not really anything at all, but it just looks really good and we've actually called it goals, but it really isn't.
Goals are not always attainable in a year.
No, they're not, but they're always but they're always trackable in any period.
I have the floor.
Yep.
There there are some issue that you can try to strive to get done in a year, but they're gonna, a lot of them are gonna carry over. They're ideas that we all can believe in, that we support in terms of beneficial for parks and recreation in our city. I think all these goals that we listed above all along on there, certainly some of them we could get done in a year's time, but they're all trackable.
If they're not all trackable though, that's where they have the issue. And I agree and I I agree with your statement about their good ideas.
Where's the non-trackable items here between one through eight?
Stay informed is not trackable. Continue to advocate, not trackable.
Well, sure, it's trackable.
No, it's not.
If the agenda continues to proceed and we're listening or we're making decisions over, uh say, an initiative of Oregon City, um that's trackable.
Um no, it's not really though, because that's not advocating, right? To listen to someone talk is not advocating. To write a letter in support is not advocating to some. And so there's there's a lot in, you know, advocate for, it's not trackable. Uh complete formal naming process, that's trackable. We completed it, done. Even initiating something, even identifying funding, that's trackable. We've identified it, here's the funding sources.
So let me let me jump in here and just give some history on the timing timing of this. Um over the years, our goals used to be one year. And I would say out of seven or eight line items, we usually completed one. Uh the city commission moved to a two-year goal-setting cycle. And this was our first attempt at um trying to follow that same timeline. I, like you, want to achieve the goals within the given time and I don't want to put pipe dreams on there. Um and this is, I would say, watered down from what I would have written. Many things on there I agree with, uh though they could have been worded differently. For example, I think one and two are are very hard to check and say, yes. But I think three through eight, within a year or two, should easily be able to be checked. And if you completed, say seventy-five percent of this, you could reconvene and look at your goals um and add and add and change. When we were did it once a year, it was a drawn-out process and you can, to the new people, you you're probably not going to adopt these until March. And then you've got nine more meetings to say we did something. And that's where this fell apart. And so the whole idea of going two years was to try to hopefully actually achieve something and not have to spend three out of twelve meetings or eleven meetings just talking about it.
And in that regard, maybe uh one and two are more appropriate under additional items of importance.
And if we want to put emphasis on things, the emphasis doesn't have to be trackable for sure. Uh and I'm fine with the two years. I don't like it uh because I just think it pushes, it kind of kicks the can down the road. But you know, if that's the cycle and that's what we do, then I'm fine with that. But I think we need to have our goals fit that timeline. And maybe move things from goals down to uh items of importance because I think that's valid as well.
If you move one and two down, I will tell you that this is probably the best list. You have the best opportunity to achieve your goals than probably has occurred in the last fifteen years. Just looking at that list, it's a very reasonable list.
And I think we could review this not in two thousand twenty-one, but January of next year and say, well, and along the way, how it will be done. But specifically have a discussion again in January and definitively adjust our list and add more things. If we've accomplished everything, let's add a couple more, let's let's keep working.
Yep.
If you remove one and two, you could nail that out in six months and then and what do we do? Then what do we do if I don't?
Well, then I think we dig, well, not then, now, I think we dig a little deeper to put a couple of things on there that there are some steps we can do in the first year that will really have benefit in the second. You know, we're gonna initiate something this year by um sending out a survey to the community to get feedback and compile that data. That's what we'll do this year. And then next year, what are we gonna do with that data, right? So then the second part of that will be, what are we gonna do with it?
And to comment, I I totally understand where you come from as far as trackable uh goals. I mean, in the more of the corporate world, I mean, that's what you, this this would be rejected.
Correct.
So the 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 the, I guess the question is, my question is, is what is the goal of these goals? I mean, are are this piece of paper?
We're an advisory committee. Keep in mind that.
Right.
Yeah, so we do have um other um entities within Oregon City. The city uh the planning committee, the city commission to go through as well. So please keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I think we just formulate our goals to be something within our control because there are a lot of things we just can't put on paper and then do them, right?
And and I I like the point, this is, we're not a corporation either. And a corporation, I agree, wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I just ask because of my ignorance. I mean, you know, I've been here an hour now.
One thing that I think is important to to know though, that having certain things on there like the Tyrone Woods Park or Filbert Run or the master plan, Phil actually needs that evidence and references that when he's filling out grant applications. So if you can't, i- if we had some citizens sit here tonight and say, here's a whole new issue. We've never talked about it before and Phil go out and fill out a grant. This hadn't been on our goals, we haven't even discussed it. So this is an e- a piece of evidence. And so I look at that as, are, can he use what we put down here to to with substance? So so there is something more than just kind of talking about it if we do it right.
There's there's another point for some broad inclusion here. We're gonna be advocating for the funding uh of the uh our issues in in the parks. And in that effort, we should be coming up with things that we feel should be dealt with in terms of the deferred funding of the of the maintenance. And some of it, I think, like identify trail connected and access through mapping away by sandage signage. So that those are, those items there uh can actually come into play in terms of what we need that, how we're going to use the funding for. Um and and having those kinds of lists there, uh should the city commission actually take an action within this uh Biennium to secure funding for the deferred maintenance? We want to be able to have some priorities as to what would occur. And some of these things are things that we do not currently have. And uh so, you know, I'm fine putting things under additional items of importance, but those things may be reflected in terms of our uh what we can do after we secure funding for the deferred maintenance.
Good point. Absolutely. So what I've suggested at this juncture is that um we send out another draft and discuss amongst ourselves by email if necessary and revisit a final draft next month.
Yeah, so I can um I can send out a probably early next week, send out a draft version uh taking into consideration the conversation we've had today. Um what I would ask is after I send it out, because we can't have meetings through email, um the connectivity of uh having back and forth in that format, something that we probably should have in open forum. Um but if you have suggestions, comments, you can send them out, send them back to me individually. And I can redistribute to to the group as a whole.
So don't reply all, but we're replying to you.
Yeah, reply to to me.
Okay.
Uh alone and not to all.
Reply to you, then post it on Facebook.
We know. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Give video evidence of you posting it.
And do we want to move one and two down? That was because it's been discussed.
Yeah, we can, yeah. And that would uh put item three at the top then.
Item three at the top?
Deferred maintenance.
Which probably is our most important one anyway.
Yes, it is.
I mean, it lines up. I was kind of watching how that would play out.
Funny how that happens.
I do have a question. Can we um, I know these are two-year goals, but can we add goals uh in six months or nine months?
Oh, yeah, sure.
If we revise them where we want.
Absolutely. The problem is generally these things get put back in the drawer and we really don't look at it again until they show up like tonight. And that's unfortunate. So I think bringing them up because we've succeeded in it and checking if you off it would be amazing.
So if I could add something that's very trackable, review and discuss two thousand nineteen, twenty-one goals at least once a quarter in the open meeting?
I was just gonna suggest it, yeah.
We can track that.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know.
Just agenda item, yeah.
My uh it's it's kind of funny, my my boss would always hound us about a couple of things that we weren't doing. And so he got this brilliant idea to put it on the weekly agenda. So we started talking about it less because it became wallpaper. We just saw it on the agenda and moved to item one below all the don't forgets, right? Because we get used to seeing it. Uh when you have me on the agenda, Phil, I don't read the address and I don't read the meeting agenda, I go right to number one. Like you missed the stuff. Uh and so I think bringing it every quarter and actually putting it on the, putting it on the agenda every quarter, but not leaving it there every month, I think might bring it back into discussion and an opportunity for us to reflect, how are we doing? Do we want to add anything? Do we want to adjust this goal now that we have new evidence, something like that?
I like it.
Okay, any further discussion on the goals for twenty nineteen, twenty-one before moving on the agenda? Okay, item seven B, Buena Vista House.
Buena Vista House. So uh this is on the agenda. Um we did have uh conversations at um, let's say, was it the December meeting? If I'm remembering correct, uh where we kind of went through uh the Buena Vista House um background and the requests from the stakeholder group. So those of you that are are new to the to the board, uh we have a um a structure which is located at Atkinson Park. Uh it was um moved there in the nineteen twenties, early thirties, I believe.
Early thirties.
And uh was used as a a community space uh up through uh the mid eighties. Uh owned and organized by the the Buena Vista Social Club. And they were basically the precursor to neighborhood associations and a lot of advocating for uh improvements in their neighborhood. And uh it was kind of a community gathering space. Uh in the mid eighties, they were no longer able to, you know, membership had dwindled. They were no longer able to um maintain um the the structure or really facilitate the ongoing uh activities at the house and turned it over to the city. Um the city maintained it as a public open uh public meeting space for uh a number of years, closing in, now I'm gonna get the number wrong. Uh two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, somewhere in there. Um and before the uh the city inspector red-tagged the facility, it was no longer habitable for public meetings structurally uh sound. And so it sat vacant for a number of years. Um we had a stakeholder group that contacted us and was interested in um bringing the house back into operating order. Uh the power had been disconnected a couple of years ago and it was stated for demolition at that time. Um a conversation was initiated with the city commission and uh remind me if I, it was prior to my time, but Sean uh kind of the keeper of of knowledge on this group right now, uh it was initiated with practice well, I'm assuming. Uh but the city commission um decided to not give direction to move forward with demolition at that time. And it's kind of sat vacant for a number of years, not really having substantial investment, not open to the public. Um we have a twenty-seven point four million dollar deferred maintenance backlog in our park system as a whole, of which the Buena Vista House is somewhere, depending on um the improvements that are made in the range of four hundred thousand to over a million dollars of improvements that would be required to reopen it as a um usable public meeting space. Uh so we met with the um uh stakeholders uh for a couple of public engagement processes. Uh we hired a facilitator that kind of went through and and worked through all of the items of importance with the stakeholders, the items of importance with the city, um what the challenges and opportunities were. Uh and that was in uh April through May of this last year. Uh at the end of the meetings, um the stakeholder group left with kind of a punch list of items to be able to kind of move through to start making uh progress on opening the house, of which one of the key items of importance for them was the um reconnection of the electricity for the house so that it wouldn't continue to deteriorate due to uh an unheated space uh with the elements. Um and so they have uh made some connection with a couple of different groups, one being the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, of which it sits in the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, the other being the Oregon City Parks Foundation. Um and the improvements, the electrical hookups, uh the new panel and uh baseboard heating. Uh the project is right around a five thousand dollar investment. Uh it also has a um roughly forty dollars per month of uh anticipated expense with heating the space uh just to keep it at minimal temperature so that it doesn't continue to deteriorate. Uh the space is uh very rough and I would gladly, if any folks have not had an opportunity to visit, I can uh schedule some time with you to go and and take a look at it. Um some of the the. Some of the, the primary needs for the space is that it is not ADA accessible. Public meeting spaces need to be ADA accessible. It, it doesn't have a foundation. It's on pilings. When piling some of the support underneath them is literally just bricks that have been kind of wedged under. And so it has substantial needs, again, looking at the rough order of magnitude in the half million to million dollar range. So the, we've had, again, a couple of meetings, most recently met with a couple of representatives of stakeholder group last week. They would like to move forward with the improvements. They also would like to move forward with designation of the house on the National Registry of Historic Places. It is, it is eligible. We've worked with our state historic preservation office. And they noted that because of the cultural significance of the stories, the, the people, the culture of the, of the house. It is eligible. It is not architecturally eligible for designation. It is a very basic structure and has had many alterations to it. But the, the story is important. And so from a staff's perspective, you know, it is, it, it's a policy direction, something that, you know, we have a very large deferred maintenance backlog. This is a substantial investment if we were to start moving towards trying to open the house up for public use. So even this initial step, even if it is money that is being brought in, that's not our responsibility. There's still staff time. There's still ongoing operation maintenance of the upkeep. And, you know, what are the next steps after this initial investment? So what are the, you know, to Troy's point about having goals that are quantifiable and that, you know, having those benchmarks? What are those next steps? What is that investment going to look like from the city's perspective? Even if we have a very well-meaning and engaged group of stakeholders. There's only so much we can do from volunteer labor and grants. I mean, that oftentimes grant cycles don't match up for matching funds and often they require matching funds. And so there's going to need to be a, an investment from the city at some point. And so that discussion in that direction should come from the city commission. So we have a planned work session with the city commission coming up on March 12th. Where we will kind of outline the history again. We've given some of the history over many months as we've had meetings here in this group. But I would suggest that any member of this group that would like to attend, please do. Again, it's an opportunity to make sure that we know that it's supported by the, the city council before staff moves forward with this investment. So with that, I will open it up to conversation, questions, comments.
I could speak if, about what Phil has talked about is complete in terms of what has happened so far. Some of the ideas, of course, would be as a stakeholder group or a friends group would be turning that back into a profit generating facility, renting it out for under the guise of, of recreation for parks. It, it at one time did just do just that. It was an income producing facility. They've had such, and I think obviously things like weddings, those, those can be a real lucrative market. Family reunions, et cetera, et cetera. That's what it was used for in the past. A lot of people don't want to see the history just taken away. Because the city hasn't, has not, does not have the ability to keep it to a state where it's usable by the public. So the friends group is quite motivated to see that that facility is preserved. And would not expect anything from the city to, in terms of financial support or even staff time. To proceed with the, with the, the goals that we have to put that building back into use. And certainly because of the history of that building being the first neighborhood association, shall we say, in the city. That a lot of people probably could support an idea like that. The friends group is going to go forward with a newspaper article. A lot of people in the city don't even know it exists. Most people probably don't know it exists unless they've been to Atkinson Park, which is in the corner of our city. So it's basically an opportunity for volunteers to be part of that park as well as the facility itself. To, to use it to help bring that park back into a serviceable facility where it's not, it's currently kept up. And I think a lot of people appreciate that the fact that it is. And we'd like to see that facility be open to more people who perhaps don't even know it exists there. So that's kind of the idea behind the whole, like, goal of getting that house back into use again.
I know some folks are working very hard on it. I was there the other day. And I've gone over there, I, I enjoy the park itself over the past couple of years. And the other day, it was kind of a little bit rainy, but my point is the last few times and this time in particular, I've seen more and more neighbors in that park. Which I was really happy to, to see. And the trillium, aware that there's trillium. So I'm anxious to see that bloom this spring. So, but it was just a, a nice thing to see more neighbors utilizing that park. So I think it'll be a good time.
I might add that the Oregon City Parks Foundation has approved a motion to give $5,000 to the group to move forward with the, the first step of getting the building, shall we say, preserved, getting heat into the building, maintain it at about 50 degrees. And that's the first step where, and there'll be more coming, more steps coming. We're having a pipe, we just talked about that earlier, but anyway, there's been a lot more fundraising opportunities. And with the newspaper article, we're hoping to get private donations coming in. And to the Oregon City Parks Foundation. And so it would be a tax deductible donation and get some equity into that park. People will begin to enjoy it again.
I have to compliment the neighborhood for their hard work. Thank you, Phil. Any other discussion on that topic? Seven C, Newell Creek Canyon Property.
I do have a short PowerPoint presentation. So those that are new on the dais, you should be able to view the presentation. And let me know if you're having a hard time seeing it on your screen. Let me come in and help if need be. Fair enough. So I wanted to give an update on the Newell Creek Canyon property discussion. We did have a brief conversation as, as a group last month, but we have a couple of new members and we have more folks here than we had last month. So I wanted to give a, a new presentation to inform the group and initiate additional conversation. So for those of you that are, helped to turn it on. There we go. For those of you that are unaware, we're discussing property number 170. That's approximately 14 acres, a little, I think 14 and a half acres or so behind the Mountain View Cemetery. That's there highlighted in yellow. It is a mostly forested, some, some, as the name would suggest from Newell Creek Canyon, it's a, it's a canyon. Some large caliper trees. Substantial waterways and things in the area as well. The property is part of what Metro has done some master planning work on the Metro Parks and Nature Newell Creek Canyon site. So they have a system of, of trails, both for off-road cycling as well as hiking and walking trails. They have a primary access point which is off of Warner Millie. And they're looking at doing a groundbreaking at some point in this next year or so. So it's very near to being open to the public and it's a very exciting 233 acres, a regional trail on regional park in our, in our city. So a very substantial piece of property for us.
Can you show us the, on this, where the, where that 170 is?
So the property in question is right here, this.
Okay, got it.
And then the cemetery property is, is this larger section here.
Okay. So Metro owns the one above that property, directly above.
Yeah, so, so one of the, so if you're looking at the, the red outline.
Yeah.
This is a, an image that was taken directly from their master plan. So you'll notice that everything in red, in the red outline, Metro considered part of their property. And what, what they came to find out and as we came to find out as we were doing all of our charter park discussions and identifying all of the city properties, is that the property in question, property number 170 is actually owned by the city. It was acquired as payment for STCs for development in lieu of STC payments to be used for park purposes. The, you know, the master plan work that has occurred, you know, obviously Metro is planning to use it for park purposes. And they would very much like to continue to use it as, as they have planned through their public engagement process. They completed a very thorough public engagement process. Put together a master plan document that included the property in question. On the slide, this is the, the trailhead, which will have parking, restrooms. Will have future nature play elements and have other viewpoints and things like that, which will be included on the property. So it's a substantial investment, very exciting piece to have again in our community. Just a little bit of a hiccup and so we need to hopefully come to a recommendation eventually. And then as city commission making a decision on what we, and ultimately do with this piece of property. So this is the full build out of the kind of trail connectivity piece for the property. 233 acres total, which includes well north of, of this location. But this is the, the trail system in the area. You'll notice the, the day use area here to the left-hand side. And then roughly, I think I have, there we go. So my very crude rudimentary overlay for approximately where that, that park property is located. So you can see part of the trail system and the connectivity to the neighborhood just to the north runs right through that piece of property. So the request from Metro would be, did we transfer the property to Metro? Could be used for the development of the Newell Creek Canyon site for the trail system and the, the nature preservation. They're, again, very well-suited and much better funded organization than we are to maintain natural areas. It's kind of their, it's their primary focus is, you know, natural areas. And they have the staff and the resources to be able to probably care for the site better than we currently are. Well, I know for sure better than we currently are as we do very minimal maintenance in that area. And so options to consider, Metro again is requesting a transfer of the property to Metro. Secondary option would be for the city to retain ownership and then enter into an IGA for Metro to maintain and operate the city-owned property for park purposes. Either through the IGA or through an easement overlay. We discussed at the meeting last month to come back and bring language that might be included in the IGA. And I do apologize as I was able to find the easement language that we have for the Canema Children's Park. I was not able to find the IGA language that we have for the Canema Slopes Park. But I will say that the easement language is a, so it would be a reverse basically of what we have at the Canema Children's Park. So about half of what you consider Canema Children's Park is actually owned by Metro. And with an easement overlay for the city to operate and maintain the, that portion of the park. And so it's, again, the physical land is owned by Metro, but the city in all reality, you know, does, we do maintain and make improvements and use it for park purposes. So it would be basically a flipping of that arrangement with Metro where we would own the physical property. There would be either an IGA or an easement overlay in which Metro would have control to build the trail system, maintain the habitat and operate the facility for the benefit of the public. So again, we don't need to make a decision tonight. And I know this is brand new information for a number of you. This is, again, an opportunity to initiate discussion and hopefully sometime in the near future to be able to make a recommendation to the city commission.
Very good. I'm just kind of curious. What are the pros and cons of A and B, plus minuses?
I guess, you know, for, for A, you know, transferring the property to Metro, it's a clean transaction. We would not, again, have ownership of the property or stake in the property. We know that Metro is, you know, we could write into the language of the transfer that it'd be used only for park purposes. And if it ever were to change use, that it would then revert back to the city. We would not then have to expend staff time and maintenance. Again, it's a natural area. But we really don't have the resources to, you know, if, if there is invasives in the area, we're really not spending a lot of time in maintaining that space. And so Metro would have the opportunity to, you know, create that habitat, make sure that it's appropriate for the type of habitat that's there. You know, if we were to transfer the property, we would not have say in how that property is used. Obviously if it's owned by us, the city would be able to dictate exactly how it's used. On the other side of that though, I would say that it's gone through a very substantial public engagement process, which shows it being used for park purposes, shows the trail system going through it. And so even though it, you know, we would have say in how it's used, it is, I think, being used for the highest and best purpose. And the reason why it has support is that it's had a very thorough public engagement process. Option B, the city retaining ownership, again, working with Metro on either through an easement or an IGA. There's a little bit of leverage there possibly in our coordination with them and how the property is used. I think Metro does a really good job of engaging their partner agencies in all of their, their pieces. And so whether it's the Canema Bluffs Park, the Newell Creek Canyon, the Loma Falls Legacy Project site. They've been a very strong partner and advocate for making sure that they're a good provider of resources in the communities that they're serving. I, again, I think from a staff perspective, either one, I think will come up with the, the same goal. I think what Metro would be looking for probably in option B is I think what Metro would be looking for probably in option B is for an easement. In all reality, if you do the easement overlay, it gives all, a lot of those same protections as if you were to transfer the property. So it's, you know, six of one, half dozen of the other.
Okay, thank you.
I, um, I guess my concern about B was whether the city could ever take that easement back. Whether the easement then is a perpetual one that couldn't be taken back. In terms of the A, uh, putting the requirement could only be used for park purposes by Metro. Metro could never use it for anything else because it was poor purchase, uh, with the, uh, levy monies that, uh, went in for the purchase of open spaces for park purposes. So Metro would never be able to use it for another purpose.
And that land doesn't seem to be available or there is no other use for it.
No, I mean, so essentially give them that land and have them build a park essentially fulfills what we're trying to do here and it's free.
Well, there is, there is other, there could be other uses for it. I mean, it's right there on the street. It could be a development, it could be sold to private, it could be, uh, just a city park for us.
Can I be used for developments on steep slopes?
Uh, not, the, 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 a good portion of it is not on the slope, no. A good portion of it is flat. Uh, and not to, I'm not suggesting that there is a better use. I'm simply saying to answer your question correctly. Yes, there are other things that can be done with it, uh, but with Metro having a park all the way around it.
Could we see the map? Uh, you showed where the boundary was again of the whole area with, you had the yellow marked off, I think.
Uh, yeah, right there.
That, that is all steep slope.
Yeah, there are some, uh, substantial slopes, um.
There is, there is no flat areas in that property at all.
No, there's not.
You've got the cemetery piece there. That's all steep slopes on the cemetery piece. It only gets steeper.
So I, so I have two, uh, thoughts on this. First, and I guess the obvious one is we could just give it to them. But I would like something in return. And Metro, um, has not been necessarily forthright on this project with their construction timeline. I believe at this point they're dangling the upper actual park, which is going to be the size of a neighborhood park, as a future phase of a yet-to-be-determined date. So option one would be to give them the property with the agreement that that upper park be constructed in Phase One. The second concern I have and probably less likely is, again, because it's a neighborhood, it appears as a neighborhood park up at the top. Granted, it will have regional draw, but the homes nearby are going to recreate there like somebody does at Wesley Lynn or Chapin or anywhere else. I believe that the city park rules need to be followed in that park as well. And the big conflict in that is Metro intends to not allow dogs in that park whatsoever. And I believe they need to allow dogs in that park on leash like in every other city park. So that the residents don't have to try to distinguish, huh, who owns this park? Is this the city's or is this, you know, it, it, it forms a gray area in the citizen's mind. I mean, I see Metro is trying to be black and white. We don't allow them, but yet they do, Blue Lake Park and a couple others. So I think there's two opportunities here. Personally, one is to negotiate the park rule and two, to negotiate timeline adjustments on construction.
You know, where you see that is in Canema.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a conflict at Canema with the children's park versus the bluff. You know, think of Joe Stutzman we met tonight that takes his kid there. He also may have dogs that he wants to go down the other park. And in one place he can, one place he can't, yet they're kind of all the same. And that's always bothered me. And, and, and Metro's argument, while it has merit in some places further down the bluff, their, their primary argument is, uh, it's a natural area and it could dis- disturb wildlife. This, can you go to the large picture of the park?
Yeah.
Uh, the next one, uh, that one. The blue lines are mountain biking trails. So to me, what's going to disturb a deer crossing the trail more than a mountain biker blowing down the hill or a walker nicely walking their dog on leash? So just.
I would say too, uh, when I was with Peoria Parks and Rec, we had several IGAs, uh, some with federal, some with state, some with other municipalities, churches, schools. I mean, we had a whole variety of IGAs. And the, the, the great advantage of that to us was it kept us at the table. Uh, we had to work in partnership with our, uh, fellow IGA participants. So one entity couldn't necessarily change the direction of a piece of property uh, without us being part of that process. Uh, but I think more importantly, what, over the twelve years that I was, uh, in Peoria, the IGAs also provided an opportunity, uh, for further cooperation on the line. Because we had an IGA in place. Something along the line would come up that, gee, we'd like to put a trailhead in this area, but we don't own any property. Oh, guess what? The Flood Control District owns this piece of property. We have an IGA in place. Can we amend that, uh, to come in here and take this property? And it just made the whole process of cooperation between different agencies a lot easier when you had something already in process, an instrument already in process. And I think, I think the, the easement idea probably accomplishes, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm talking out of my head here because I don't really know the history behind this. But I would, I would suspect that that would accomplish what, uh, Metro is probably wanting in terms of assurances that they can use the property, uh, for their master plan purposes. But I, I would suggest that, you know, from, from the city's interest, we might want to stay at the table uh, through an IGA. Just my thoughts.
Question on that, um, how many acres did you say is our piece here?
Uh, I think it's fourteen point five.
And then how many acres is the easement at Canema?
Uh, maybe three.
Okay. I, I mean, personally I prefer the IGA. I think, uh, you said it very well. Keeps us at the table, makes sure that everyone's interests, interests are covered. Uh, the IGA can include, uh, Oregon City Park rules apply to that Metro park, um, as part of that IGA. Uh, and if that ever has to be discussed, we can get to the table to discuss it. However, um, you know, if they want to do some kind of a swap, I mean, why would we give them our property when they don't, not going to give us theirs? I mean, I just, I don't understand that. We'll keep what's, you know, what's mine is what's mine and what's yours is mine. It doesn't seem right. Um, at the same time, it's not a fair trade nonetheless. Well, I guess you could argue it might be because one's developed, one isn't. I don't know the history of all that. But, um, I'm still in pain with the IGA to keep us all at the table.
I, I guess philosophically I don't have a problem with the IGA. I have a problem with a lot of the things that, uh, Mr. Dachler was saying should be in it. Uh, for one thing, um, uh, they, they, if, if we gave it to them or we had an IGA, they wouldn't be able to do that, uh, trail, uh, in Phase One anyway. They don't have the money to do it.
That's, I didn't, that's not what I said. Let me clarify. Uh, my understanding is the day-use area at the top left in this photo is, the majority of that is not going to be constructed in Phase One. And so what I'm suggesting is, as a carrot, to get that built in Phase One, then we go through with these other steps. I'm not talking about trail construction. I'm talking about up here at the beginning at the head, at the entrance, the, the actual day-use park area. Cause they've said the majority of those components are going to be Phase Two.
I think they said the parking was their first priority, getting hard surface in there and restrooms.
Yeah, parking, restroom and then I think the trail. And they were going to ignore all the picnic shelters, the, the play area and those sorts of things. And, and frankly, that neighbor, that neighborhood over there could use a playground. And I mean, it's a natural play area, but it's still a playground and picnic tables and things like that.
Wouldn't it be nice for the neighborhood to be there playing in the park and watching the park develop? To be able to see the other parts of the face.
Metro has the money, so I, I don't see why they need to split this up, I guess is my. I, I don't see why that needs to be put into Phase Two. There's been nothing convincing. It's when the people have sat here from Metro, they've just made mention that, well, these things are going to occur in the next phase. And when I asked why, they really didn't have an answer. And so this to me seems like a good opportunity to say, you need something? So do we. Let's change the timeline a bit. That, that's, that's really all I'm asking for. I'm not asking them to change construction drawings or design elements whatsoever.
Well, the, the other thing had to do with the dog use park. I mean, you, you're, Metro owns the, the segment behind the development there where you got the, where you got the star coming through. And then they own the other portions. Uh, I don't think there's any practical way you can say, okay, you, you know, you take your dog, how do you get your dog from that point? And, and you're asking to change your dog, their dog park. So I don't think they're going to do that. And number two, you got a big dog and the deer runs across the path. That dog can pull, pull, get off the leash and chase the deer, which is their, which is their concern.
I've had two same regards. I'm well a full, I'm full well aware of what a large dog will do on trails, but.
And, and the bicycles aren't going to chase the, the bear, the deer down the, down the, down the slope. So it's not, they're not comparable.
Well, but I, I think if you look up here at the lower left by the day-use area, your, your example's perfect. You got the orange star and you want to connect to the other orange star and you live in those neighborhoods. You can't if you're walking a dog. That just doesn't seem right. When you could in any, you talk about trail connectivity. There's a trail connectivity component there that from one neighborhood to the next, and you can't take your dog across it. When we've heard for the last five or ten years how, I mean, on, on our agendas, dog parks, dog access is one of the most important things that people, the only time people sit here and keep telling us we need more of, it typically is dog-related.
Well, demographics are changing too, you know, more people, you know. Here's my pressing question. What is a giant snag?
There's a snag, there's a tree.
Tree, big tree.
Tree, tree, it's a dead tree.
Really? Okay.
And the other side to it Doug is, it's free to ask.
Sure. Well, I, I make the suggestion, uh, his notion is, yeah, we'll, we'll give you that piece and you go ahead and develop the, and that's what you were saying. I think that's a great suggestion. Uh, yes, you can have that piece. Your, your dog rules will apply, but this thing opens up in, in Phase One. So that can be a good trade-off.
Yeah.
For them actually having it. And if that doesn't work, then go ahead with the easement. I think that's a good negotiation.
Yeah, I.
So if we're asking that, um, dogs should be allowed in that, it's where we started our tour.
That wasn't my argument. My argument was, uh, they, they, they would get their piece and their, their laws, regulations would apply and exchange a day-use area then is developed in Phase One.
Right.
With an IGA you're talking about?
We're talking.
They get what they want with an IGA. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know what the IGA would be.
Or transfer the property you're talking about? Just give it to them?
I'm saying you would transfer the, this property for, uh, under the condition that they.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify you're talking about transferring.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, but under the requirement they include the development of the day-use area at Phase One.
They, I, I am certain that Metro doesn't want to have any of their property that they own uh, be allowed to have dogs running loose on it. Loose, tethered or not tethered. We know a lot of people don't tether their dogs, but the point is that's an exception. They don't want to have to battle on every Metro park they own. And when people go to the polls to vote, whether we want to support their next acquisitions, and that's how they get their land, most fully, certainly with the newspaper coverage, most fully are aware that if you're voting yes, you're excluding dogs and that access to that area. And, and they can give you good reasons why that's the case. That there's a lot of places dogs can go, but there's certainly one of them that isn't. And there's a lot of people, I'm not one of those, who don't want dogs around them while they go into these places. And I think that's probably, uh, those are the ones who would usually pull the yes lever to give them the money. So you have a, it, it would be interesting. I don't think they'd want to make that agreement.
Well, and I think one a- alternative to what I suggested, I think Phil and I had it on a sidebar once, was that basically the signage at the trails going down was no dogs, but that the day-use area or the family area would be, because it visually is consistent with any other city park. And, and that's an alternative.
Yeah.
Also, you could change ownership. The city could, we could swap land. And so Metro's not, uh, obliged to have a dog area because now it's a city park.
And they just have an IGA to have the day-use area in it.
Well, okay, here's the problem. They develop that, that land and then they give us the development land? I don't think they'd want to do that. Uh, the point is, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, they give us this and we build it? We don't have the money to do it. They do.
No, I think what he's saying is, is, is you do a land swap still with an IGA that they maintain it. Is that what you're saying?
They don't own it.
But they just don't own the land under it. They just have an IGA to use it.
Well, yeah, but my question is, I want, I want them to pay for the development of that piece.
And I think that's what you're saying.
And then will you own it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Metro doesn't own it. They're not going to, like, that's a can of worms they don't want to get into. Any land that they currently, any land that they own is, is off limits to dogs.
They, they have a couple, but not, not all.
Yeah. And that's the thing. They, they made an exception on bike paths too. I mean, and, and so, and you're not, you're talking about an area that's not exactly a part of the open spaces per se. It's a day-use area. So they, they may be willing to accept it, just for that.
Ask.
I think, yeah, I think that's.
Conversation with them.
I think that'd be a good negotiation. Yep, yes, they get the property under the condition this goes into Phase One and then the day-use area only, they could have dogs leashed on leash.
Yeah.
So if they really want the property, then they would do that.
Yeah, that's kind of how I felt about it.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's free to ask.
It sounds fair.
So I think for, um, what we will probably eventually get to is a, uh, a recommendation, formal recommendation from this group that will go to the City Commission. Um, and I, I'm asking for, uh, no motion to be made tonight. Because again, new information and I'd love for you guys to think about this. Uh, make a thoughtful consideration and then a, a thoughtful motion to move forward to the commission. Um, there's quite a few things that, uh, were suggested tonight. Um, a lot of us, you know, a lot of things rest to think about and to probably go back and, um, determine what might be feasible. Um, you know, one of the things that came up was the, um, the swapping of properties, uh, depending on how those funds and what kind of commitments were made through, I mean, if it was purchased with bond funds or levy funds uh, for the day-use area, um, or if we are just going to ask them for development of that area for them to maintain ownership and for it to have access for, for dogs in the day-use area. Um, you know, it, it would, it might change what they're able to do, um, for, you know, just that park versus, um, their regional, uh, conversation. So I can, let me go back. I'll digest what, what we all talked about. I'll keep it on the agenda for next month. Uh, by that point, hopefully we'll have another member as well. Um, and then, uh, you know, the next month or two, if we can probably come up with a recommendation that would move forward, uh, whether or not that's, you know, just staff to negotiate the best terms. These are things of importance or, you know, whatever, whatever that might be. But, um, I'd gladly, again, come back and have this conversation. If anyone has any, uh, side, you know, if, if you'd like to, to meet with, with me and look at more information specific to this piece of property, I'll gladly go over through the GIS maps and, you know, the topography of the area or any, anything else that might be of importance to you.
Okay, sounds good. All right, uh, seven D, Willamette Falls Legacy update.
Great. Uh, so not a lot has changed since our update last month, but, um, we are working on finalizing negotiations, uh, with the design team for Phase One. Um, hopefully we'll have a, uh, public, uh, recognition, um, notice going out, uh, press release in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we still have groundbreaking scheduled to occur on or before April, uh, twenty twenty. Um, and so we're still on that timeline. Um, that timeline is, is there primarily, uh, we have, um, funds from the state that need to be. That timeline is there primarily, we have funds from the state that need to be, began to be spent in that timeline. So that's kind of a hard timeline for us to make sure that we're hitting. As you saw in the email that I sent out, there's an opportunity to go and visit the site. So if you have not responded yet and you'd like to go, please send me an email and let me know. That's the best way to let me know so that I can then forward it on to Christina and the Metro representative that are coordinating the trip. But that's next Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. So if you have an opportunity and you haven't been out or if you've been out and you'd like to go again, that's a great visit. And I highly suggest you make it out there before groundbreaking so you can get a little bit of the before and after, which is going to be really neat. So highly recommend.
Great. All right, next page, item 7E, Pratt Vacant Positions.
So we currently have one vacant position on Pratt for a three-year term, which began January 1 of this year. We interviewed at the work session prior to this meeting two applicants, Alicia Hammack and Joe Stretzman. Alicia is in the, oh goodness, what neighborhood was that again?
Daphne.
Daphne Lane, thank you. And Joe is just outside of the city limits, near Stone Creek Golf Course. And we do have our bylaw state that we can have up to two representatives from outside city limits or representing any given neighborhood association. We have no conflicts with either.
Very good.
Do we have, who's from Daphne right now? Who represents?
I don't think we have anyone.
Nobody. And then outside city limits, do we have somebody?
Uh, we have one. Yeah.
Currently.
Jeff.
Can we take action now or do we have to postpone next meeting?
Oh, we can definitely take action now.
So do we have, I'm trying to decide how to do this to best decide. Do we need a discussion first? Okay. All right, so who would like to start? Any preference over the two?
Well, I was going to say, just we had a discussion, but do we actually want to do a written ballot?
Oh, I believe.
Does it have to be by?
I believe our bylaws state that by voice vote. And I passed out copies of the bylaws. I'm not sure if I kept one for myself. I'll get one.
Before we get there, I have a quick question or comment. I don't want to place myself in a position, but I know Alicia. I had no idea she was even, I know her husband mainly. I know her by whatever. But so essentially, I didn't even know it until I saw the, you know, email. I don't know if that's a conflict of interest or not.
Just as long as you state it and that you're able to make a decision.
Equally.
Equalling.
Well, of all we're stating it, I have Joe from the VFW. I knew Doug when we recommended him.
Did you vote for me?
And I would like to call out my previous remark in regards to the voice voting. That is that it just says voting will be by voice vote. So I'm not sure if that means for nominations as well. But that is how we have done them previously, is by a voice vote.
Well, I was saying maybe the voicemail vote could be actually, who do you want as a person, an A or an A? So as we go through the voices, the people can indicate who they support.
Oh, yeah. I guess with only two candidates in one position, it makes it a little easier to do that.
So shall we have a discussion?
Any comments? Anyone would like to start the discussion? Any favor of the two?
I would suggest as well as Jacob, when they can even name the person that you wanted.
Oh, okay.
That was my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're open for discussion before that.
Sure, no, no, but I don't think she understood what I was saying.
I get it now, yeah. Thank you.
I probably would favor Alicia. She seems like, obviously she has a lot of qualifications that would help this committee. And that's probably where I'm going to cast my vote. I do remember her when she was working at Montavilla Community Center and I was still working in parks and that was in our area of responsibility. And so I make that announcement that, but I think just by the fact that she's been here as long as she has, 14 years in the city, she certainly has a grasp on ways to make improvements that this board would probably benefit from her knowledge.
I'm going to.
You too.
I know the families. I mean, they're very well-grounded. I mean, her husband also runs, is involved in Parks and Rec. He runs one of the community centers. So from what I know, they're very, just solid people. She seems to have an insane amount of experience, so.
I was impressed with Joe. What I liked about Joe is he was a regular community member and he didn't come with Parks and Rec experience, which I really appreciate. Just a regular old guy who, well, I might add, regular with the caveat that he served our country well. Because that's a little bit different than regular for the most of us. But I liked that he didn't come, it does not come to us with prior experience. And therefore will, my impression is that he will not come with predetermined ideas or solutions, but rather be open to new ideas and come with maybe some off-the-wall ideas that we need to consider again.
I would definitely advocate for Joe for the reasons he said, but also I think we as a body should have a broad representation. And he has a three-year-old son. His viewpoint and use of parks is different than all of ours, I would probably assume. So I think that's an important thing that as we come to the table, we all represent different neighborhoods, different ways of life, different viewpoints. And I think having a young child and participating definitely gives you a different perspective. And I think we should have a broad age representation as well. I can speak for the other things that he does bring some off-the-wall topics at the VFW and they're usually innovative and pushing us outside of our comfort zone for the good. And I do, on Alicia, the only thing that bothered me was the fact that it's kind of, there's a bureaucracy piece there because she works in the industry. And secondly, I'm making an assumption here, but you solicited her input so she didn't come looking for the position. And I want somebody that sits at the table, that's chomping at the bit to get here and looking for that open way to volunteer in the city. That's my take.
Very difficult decision for me. Very difficult. I like them both in different ways. And I really liked Alicia's experience. And as we were going around the table, I thought, I'm going to nominate her. But Joe said something that struck out at me very first. And I'm going to go with him. And what it was, was taking ownership of the community.
Yeah.
And that's my deciding factor. I originally was going to go for experience, but I've changed my mind.
Yeah. I'm going to comment on something Sean said. We weren't getting the applications and that's why I think somebody might have found to say, you want to apply, we have this on an individual basis. And I think, I have no problem with that because if we don't have, if we don't get the applicants, then I think in some ways we're all duty-bound to see if we can get somebody to come up.
I totally agree with you. I just think, I like the concept of the person that's chomping at the bit is more favorable than the other.
Yeah. The point that you make, and I think is a valid one, is, well, I think both of you gentlemen made it, was that bringing a professional onto advisory group does not, doesn't necessarily bring the focus of what generally the population might want in terms of the activities that go forward. I was very impressed with Alicia. But the other thing that struck me about Joe is his inclusiveness. I mean, obviously he's interested in diversity, which we don't really have. And he doesn't add to the diversity on this body. But concern about homelessness and the fact, of course, we do have homeless people using the parks and so forth indicates a broader concern about the community, which I was impressed with.
Well, I'm glad I wasn't in that interview. Or, you know, I might be odd man out. I found, it was quite interesting to me. I found common ground in both of them. When I read their resumes before I came tonight, I was probably, professionally, I probably identify more with Alicia than I do with Joe because we have similar experience and background and professionalism. So I found a kindred spirit there. But I like some of the things that Joe said, especially about, one of the things that resonates with me is the homeless issue. I know that that's a huge problem up here and it was down in Arizona where I was from too. And there was some zeal in his, in his, some passion in his presentation. I don't know, jury's still out in my mind right now. It's probably going to come down to the last seconds as to who I support. But I probably, like I said, I probably align more with Alicia more right now simply because it's a professional thing. I understand where she's coming from. But I also get the fact that somebody who's not a professional probably would do very well on this committee because of the citizen aspect, more of the, you know, a homeowner, a participant, a stakeholder type thing. So I get both angles. So I'm kind of conflicted right now. I might, if I can, I might also add on Alicia's resume that she would be a help to us, I'm sure. She is a staff technical advisory master planning member, master planning, which we're going to be dealing with for South Park Blocks, which was huge. Midland Park, a smaller Park Highway, Mill Park, a small Bryant Square, which is all about homelessness down off of Burnside. And the Gateway Discovery Park, which is northeast Portland, which is also dealing with the same issues, homelessness. So I think that we have an opportunity to have a professional who, I think, can lend expert, I'm going to say expert commentary to a lot of our discussions here, not just our opinions, but I think it would be a friend that Phil could, not a friend, but a member that Phil would be able to use to all of our advantage. But I think there's a lot of issues that are coming up, certainly, that she would be a big help.
And I don't want to sway any part of the discussion because it's totally your decision who you choose. I just want to reference the outreach that was done was after they closed in October. We still didn't have anybody into January. And I reached out to her a couple of weeks ago and said, hey, we still don't have anyone. I know you live in town. We've used her as, she does supervise director park in Portland and a couple of other parks, recreational components of developed parks. And we have used her on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project as a sounding board and a professional that deals with activating public spaces. And so that was one of the things I was like, oh, this would be a key. So again, you know, I did not know Joe before tonight. I did know Alicia, obviously. But I just wanted to put that out there as far as my, you know, soliciting.
At the top of, let me just say, let me just say one more thing. At the top of, if you refer to her resume, you still have it, I'm sure. She's collaborative, creative, a communicator, problem solver, and a project manager. We don't get that opportunity very often on this group here to have somebody in that field. Joe said he had a three-year-old, but I think, didn't Alicia say she had three children as well?
Yeah, her youngest is 10, she said, I think. And you, what were you going to say, Doug?
No, I was just going to make a comment. Had we not got to this point, I was very seriously thinking of asking Barb Street, a former Parks and Rec director here, to apply too. I mean, the same thing, we weren't having the applicants. And so I think we, I had no problem with that kind of solicitation.
Well, and again, I think it's important to remember, I absolutely get what you're saying. But my name is on every Parks Master Plan that we've done, including the Master Plan update since 2002. I'm an IT guy. I don't, I didn't know jack about this stuff. But I live here and I'm still able to provide, hopefully, valid and usable information to the Master Plan because I can tell you, we need to advocate for our pools and we need better parks and we need newer playgrounds. I don't think you need to have all these qualifications to serve on this board.
No. I mean, from a professional standpoint, that's what he and his staff are responsible for. So, no, yeah, I agree. Having a knowledge base is a positive thing as well. So I mean, yeah.
Boy, is that a tough decision. It would all great.
The reason I suggested going through and asking and saying who we were supporting, you put in motion forward and then you vote no on people and it, you know, you lose the personality, personal aspect. And that was my suggestion on the voting process.
Let me ask this. Do we want to postpone our vote by a month?
No, I don't think you should.
No, okay.
And they're filling the seat that I'm in.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to keep continuing. You should fill it tonight.
Let's get rid of this guy.
You've got enough people here. We've got the applicants. That's the only reason we delayed it was for the applicants. Now we have them.
Okay.
There's no reason to delay any further. Somebody should just make.
I mean, I'm glad we're feeling uneasy personally. I mean, if you've got two good candidates.
Yeah. Be thankful you're in this position.
Yeah. Very difficult decision.
Bite the bullet and take it.
I'm looking for a vote.
So we're going to vote down the line and you only have two candidates. So it should make it pretty easy to save your support. Okay. So Daniels?
I would support Alicia.
Kugel?
Your arguments were brutal. I'm going to stick with Alicia.
Hollinger?
Joe.
Dashler?
Joe.
Elvek?
Very difficult. Joe?
It's going to be up to you, Alicia.
And Sergeant?
Oh, did I get a vote?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I think I'm going to go with Alicia.
And we have on a four to three, Alicia.
Good candidate, good candidate.
I would still hope that in your, whether it's a letter or a personal.
Oh, yeah.
That you mentioned that we'd like this, whoever the candidate was that was not picked would be available for us if we run into that next situation.
Well, and just reapply in October. I mean, you can count on those.
Maybe hoping before then. We have somebody out for a commissioner position, I believe, here on this count.
We do?
We certainly do. Right next to you.
Who?
One of you?
Oh, for the vacancy?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Are they applying or?
No, they're interviewing next week.
Okay, interview action, okay.
Who else?
We stay Wednesday.
Oh, congratulations. So you're ready. Congratulations. Congratulations.
And Charlotte's up there.
And the bonding commissioner could lose a chair. We can lose a chair.
It's the, yeah, what do you say, the chair game? The musical chair.
And, and you're right. When I read the two resumes, I thought to myself.
Really?
I mean, I have, usually, I mean, there's a lot of good candidates, but the deck was stacked this time.
They were both, or are, they are both, I would say, great in their own way. Okay, moving on, item seven F, Prac Bylaws.
So you have in your packet tonight a copy of the Prac Bylaws, a draft version of the most recent bylaws, which were amended and adopted in June of 2018. The version that you have in front of you has some highlighting and some strike throughs based on conversations that we had the last couple of meetings, the interest in having a non-voting teen member representing the youth perspective on Prac. And so there's some language in there under section four, organization, item two, which speaks to the teen representative. I believe Troy had some comments around wanting to make sure that we're not stating high school age specifically, or, or high school specifically, that we should be open to any youth, whether they're homeschooled or, or in school. We have also made some kind of cleaning up of the language in a couple of the different Similarly, under organization, I removed, or suggesting removal of no more than two members at large may reside outside city limits in that section, and moving it down to section five, under member eligibility, it's more in keeping with the context in that area. Additionally, in section six, item one, changing the meetings shall ordinarily begin at 7:00 PM and end no later than 9:30 PM, which we're pretty close to at that moment right now. The actual city commission has approved all committees to be done by 10:00 PM with a full vote of the committee required to move anytime after 10:00 and ending no later than 11:00. And so I did not include that additional language, but we can, if, if it's the wish of the group to have the option to go till 11:00, we can definitely put that in there. But I thought that the 10:00 PM probably should be in keeping with the preferred timeline for the rest of the committees in the city. So with that, open up to discussion, suggestions, alterations.
Well, under our current bylaws, we have to be done in 10 minutes.
Exactly.
So just one comment I have for organization number two about the teen, we're using the term teen, but we don't have a minimum age. Teen implies 13 or older. So are we going to stick with the, are we going to, are we going to define the age? Or should we change it to of minority age?
Adolescent.
Adolescent, something that, because teen, teen specifies an age, but we're not saying an age.
I, I would think that the, so the definition of eighteen years of age or younger at the beginning of the term more fully represents the, I think it's more of a marketing on my mind when we're putting it. It's easily noted teen typically in, you have teen representatives on or it's committees, you have teen councils, it's just.
And I'm fine with that from a marketing piece or a discussion piece, but on a document, a teen is also a nineteen-year-old, but we're saying teen representative, that's not, that's eighteen or younger. I just think if we put maybe a minimum, minimum age and call it something different for the bylaws would be helpful. If we want to refer to the teen, you know, or the minor, minority, not minority, minor age, whatever, I think that's okay. I think it's a little confusing when you say teen, but not really because it's not nineteen, and we don't want maybe a thirteen-year-old, or maybe we do.
Well, if my granddaughters are any indication, I don't think you want a thirteen-year-old in.
My son as well.
I, I will assume that they all go through the same application process that we do. And if, if in fact we only had one applicant, we didn't feel that applicant was appropriate, we could actually do a vote that would nullify that. I mean, I, I, we're, we're going to be looking at the qualities of the person. I had one concern.
Well, hang on, before we, before we move on, I think my point is still valid, and I don't want to just push under the carpet and move on to the next thing. I, if it, if it doesn't matter, then let's make it not matter.
And I can follow up with, I have a copy out to our city attorney to review, but at the same time, there may be suggestions from this group that may need to tweak as well, so.
And even if we don't put a minimum age, but we just leave it eighteen, or we could put, you know, maybe call them an underage or, or non-adult or something between the ages of fifteen and eighteen or something. I just think it'd be helpful, especially if someone's reading the bylaws, it needs to be clear to them what they can do.
Let me, let me say, let me give my support to the teen, and actually saying younger than eighteen, I have a problem with that. Most seniors in high school are eighteen years old.
Well, but it says at the, at the end, at the beginning of their term.
Oh, oh, oh.
And if you're starting your senior year, the, probably ninety percent are seventeen at the beginnings.
Okay, okay, I, I see that.
It caught my attention too, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to come, I mean, I've had teenage kids too, and most of them, I feel like would be an issue. But the point is, if you include teen, you're giving both the possibility of both middle school and high school students applying for the position. And I think there's a benefit to that. And so I, I, I like the idea of the teen period, and, because you're getting the whole framework for middle school, high school, and if we, and there are some people that young that in fact, you could make a strong candidate. My, my kids, your kids may not qualify, but I wish that probably could.
Whatever.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to call it a teen, I think we still need to establish some sort of minimum age.
So, so if I can make a couple of comments, this was, this whole topic was my suggestion. Because I have a particular person in mind that I suggested that he do this. It's a young man who's trying to get into a military academy and is looking for civic involvement. And about ten or twelve years ago, we had this very thing on Prac. His name was Dylan, maybe even more than twelve years then, because, and, and the concern I have, and it's not worded in this, in here at all, and I think we did discuss it at the December meeting, is, in my opinion, it needs to be for that school year, and the term not run.
Currently.
On the calendar like our terms do. It's more, this should be probably more of a solicit out to the schools in September, hoping for an October appointment, and be done in June, and give them their letter of thank you from the mayor, and, and off they go.
And to, to that point, I specifically did not put in a start time or end time. Because we, honestly, we don't have them for any of the other positions either. So it's kind of a, you know, if, if we generally have, you know, the, the time starts at this month for the teen position, I think that's just a rotating, rotating date.
And that's why I wondered, you left it blank intentionally, or, okay. Because I, I think that's how it's going to probably work best.
Yeah.
Is if you run the school calendar, and, and it's an advisory position. So, you know, some years you're probably not going to get anybody, and other years you could get three applicants. I think Oregon City High School with their JROTC program in particular will have, and, and their student council, well, between those two pools, you could get, you know, a fair amount and find a whole new perspective, so.
Guys might have to set up a couple of days of interviewing instead of just one.
I do think that we, if we're going to leave the one-year term and for everything to shine that light, we need to get rid of the word shall, because shall makes it a requirement, which means if they cut it short of a year, then it's, I don't know, it's a resignation versus, versus a completion of their term.
Right.
So there needs to be something in there, maybe up to one year, and then something that says if they, you know, end at the end of the school year, they're considered a, you know, completed their term or something of that nature.
When you could just, just take out the word shall and call it a one-year term, and the term is defined kind of, it, it, well, it's not defined, a school year is nine months, and it's a year not defined, just leave it.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a legality. If you put shall, then it's a must, and then they cut out early, and we can't give them a letter to say thank you when they cut out early, right? It just, it looks different.
We could define it as shall serve a one-school-year term. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. Shall's the language that was used in a lot of the other bullet points, and so that was.
Or, I think, I think for those, it's appropriate, because if, you know, I think we shall serve our term, but if we cut out early, it's a resignation, it's not a completion of term, which this is intending to be a completion of term, even though it's less than a year, and shall doesn't allow for that.
I wanted to talk about another item. If we're, are we through with item two? I, I want to talk about item one. I probably was asleep when we went back right by that. But I remember that these requirements were probably formed twelve to fifteen years ago. And I, I wonder why, I don't remember why we thought that having a representative from the Pioneer Community Center was necessary. We get all that information already from Denise primarily. I don't know why we didn't include the swimming pool. The community center, if we were going to include Pioneer Center, so I don't understand the reasoning that we don't include both of those or have neither one of those as a designated member.
I think you bring up a very good point, and I would say in my history, it was historical. I mean, in other words, I, I don't have a good answer for you, and I would say Roger provided a huge amount of input, but that's not always been the case.
And why not the swimming pool? Equally as important, community center.
Yeah. I, I think, so Kathy gave me a little bit of the background information on it, and I guess there was a fairly involved friends group for the Pioneer Center at one point, and to include their, their voice at the Prac meetings. She did say it's been harder and harder as the years have gone on to continue to get somebody who would be the Pioneer Center representative, and as we've seen with this current batch, and having to shift Karen to become the Pioneer Center representative, it's been a little bit difficult to find somebody for that position specifically that has that institutional knowledge or is an active participant in the Pioneer Center. And so she had no issues with dissolving that position if, if need be. You know, with Karen holding that position currently, we might not have to think about it for, you know, five years now, but.
Or just have nine members at large.
Yeah, and that would be, you know, something that you could do completely.
I would not object to its removal. Sounds like you're feeling the same way.
I advocate its removal. I mean, we're talking about it now, let's do it now, let's not push the can down the road. It doesn't, and there's still some great value in having a representative. When I was on the school board, I was asked and accepted to be on the advisory board for into the Oregon Trail. We didn't, we weren't required to, but they asked, they wanted a representative from the schools, and so they asked, and I said, sure, I'll do it. We can certainly do that of the pool, of the Pioneer Community Center, anyone else who, you know, within reason and jurisdictions of the city, we can accept that. So I think it's, by taking it out, it doesn't preclude us from having somebody who speaks kind of for them and delivers some reports, but this requires it, and I would like to remove the requirement.
One advantage of deleting the Pioneer Community Center and going to nine members at large is that we could probably bring on Joe.
Well, it doesn't change the numbers. We've got eight plus one.
Oh.
And now we go to nine.
Yeah.
So it just, we had one, but we, we did have the issue with the other applicant. When she came to us as the Pioneer Community Center, we said, we can't, but can we? Because she's them, she's not, and so there was some conflict in our bylaws, which we quickly resolved, but this would eliminate the need for that discussion.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's consensus on removing that?
Yeah.
Okay. I had one other thing I'd like to have a discussion about. Down under, where it was removed from number one down to number six under member eligibility. And I remember that that might, those same, where it said no more than two members shall reside outside the city limits. I don't understand that requirement. What I do understand is that if somebody was being interviewed, or if two candidates being interviewed, and the one that was, and we already had, for example, one member on the board and from outside the city limit, that somebody within the city loses that interview, for instance, to somebody outside the city. Now, are the taxes that you pay any different whether you're in the city or outside the city? Shouldn't you have some sort of priority on being on, being, talk about your own parks within your city? So I was just wondering why we had, had that in there. You might remember, if there's some reason for that?
My take, and it's very blurry, is, is simply, you've got to remember, there were certain times over the time from when Bill and I started, our bylaws, we were amending them simply to get to a quorum. So we would have been the bylaws next year because we only had seven people, so we made seven members. Then all this, and, and we did that for five or six years, and then all of a sudden, since then, it's, we've been at nine, and we have, until, this has been the hardest year for probably the last six years, not being able to fill positions. And so I believe it was, and, and this doesn't state that they get preference over somebody in the city. I think it's just so they can't stack the deck.
Well, and are there associations outside the city limits?
No.
No. No, so this, so this basically says if you're not part of an assoc, if you're not part of association, without the outside the city limits part, it's basically saying you can't, right? Because you're not in a, you're only in a neighborhood association. So this is a way to say, if you're not in an association, we'll still take you, and you fit in your own little box.
You mentioned the benefit of having outside the city. So our services, our, our services extend to people outside the city. Senior center, swimming pool, you don't have to be an Oregon City resident to use the swimming pool either. So there might be perspectives that people from outside the city can bring, even though they're not paying taxes into, if they're swimming pool, I'm sure they're charged to be a member of the swimming pool, so they're, they're doing it in that fashion, so.
That's what I was going to say, the same thing. Just because, let's use Joe's husband tonight for an example. He's a consumer of park services, and he's a revenue source because he's paying for certain services. And so I, I think it was just to stack the deck, but the, the, one to highlight that Doug mentioned was more so on the, I think, on the Pioneer Center, because that was a much broader, Meals on Wheels Pioneer Center was a, their boundary was larger, if you will, specifically larger.
Yeah, it makes sense, yeah. Okay.
You don't have an issue with that?
No, I'm going to have a discussion.
Yeah.
So we're thinking leaving it?
Yeah.
I think you should leave it, because I, I think there's value to an outside applicant. If somebody actually wants to go outside of their area and, like Joe, and come here and provide input, and we have the space, why would we turn them away on a technicality?
Yeah, and there could be a business owner potentially, someone owns a business here.
Yeah, very good.
Well, and my thought, my, I guess for clarification for me, if we took out number six, it doesn't mean that we can't have someone from outside the limits.
Right.
Right? It's still, we still can, because it doesn't say you have to belong to association. So this, again, I'm just trying to clarify, so tell me if I'm wrong here. So if we take it out, it doesn't say they, that they're not welcome, just because they're outside the city limits. But what it does do is ensure that the bulk of our members, or more than two, aren't from outside the limits.
But if we don't.
Just like we're saying no more than two from each association.
And that's why I think it should remain.
Makes sense.
I, I would want to be explicit on that.
Speaking as the one member here that's outside the city limits, I associate with Oregon City. I tell everybody I live in Oregon City. That's my postal address. I do all my shopping in Oregon City. It's, you know, I don't, just because I live outside of the, the actual city limits, I don't consider myself anything other than, you know, a member of Oregon City, so.
Yeah, so let's leave it. When, when you pay fees at the pool, and you may know this, I don't know how often you frequent the pool, but if you're outside the city limits, you pay a higher fee, right? It's a discussion for a different day, I guess, but. I don't know, it's kind of basic. I get, I get why, but at the same time.
The discussion is.
If you're still part of Oregon City, we're still welcome.
Well, the discussion though is my taxes are subsidizing part of my cost to the pool.
Right, right.
Simple as that.
You know, so I think on city commission, I think you have to live within the city limits to be able to be a city commissioner. Now, the reason for that is, I don't know it, but maybe we have.
There may be quasi judicial decisions.
For the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, not outside the city limits.
Yeah, okay. Good discussion though.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Moving on to, uh, item seven G, Clackamette Park Master Plan.
Uh, so just to confirm, so for the prac bylaws piece, I'll make these revisions, I'll send them out to the group, make sure that, uh, it accurately reflects kind of the general discussion and then I will forward those to the city attorney to make sure that they, while their boxes checked and, and T's and I's jotted and, and I will, uh, then again, bring it back to next month's meeting for further consideration and hopeful adoption, or recommendation for adoption by the city commission.
So because of the time, do we stop or do we continue?
Uh, the actual, the city commission has, uh, stated for all committees citywide, so I would assume that that would supersede our bylaws.
Okay.
Um, but they made that consideration a couple of months ago now.
Hey, we gotta get to Clackamette Master Plan.
I know. If we didn't, I, I think Bill might be waiting for me in the parking lot.
On the issue of time, I move that we.
So, uh, there is a, um, again, a conversation that's been happening around Clackamette Park and needing to develop a master plan for the park, initiated the conversation due to the, uh, boat ramp. The current boat ramp had seen some damage, the, uh, Clackamas River had kind of shifted channels and was, uh, the boat ramp was not in the, the appropriate location. Let me, sorry, turn on the. Let me fall. So the, uh, boat ramp was not in the appropriate location, uh, to serve the boating community. Uh, the city worked with the Oregon State Marine Board, uh, and conducted a hydrology study uh, to look at where the best location for the boat ramp would be in Clackamette Park. Uh, so this image that you're seeing basically everything, um, in this area, all the way around through here is all of Clackamette Park. Um, the parking lot for the boat ramp is in this area and the boat ramp is here. Uh, during the conversations with the city commission and with prac, uh, there was some concern as to the, uh, recommendation from the hydrology study stated that we should move the boat ramp three hundred feet roughly down river in, in this general area. Uh, that would require moving additional hardscapes and, um, driving lanes in the, the one majority of the green space in the park. Uh, so the, um, city commission asked if we could, you know, maybe consider what we're doing with the park as a whole. Couple of the other amendees that make up kind of the bulk of, um, the master plan and what staff had anticipated moving forward with is, we really need to look at the, the boat ramp, what we're doing with that, where it will be located. We need to look at the RV park, we have, uh, ongoing concerns with operating it effectively in that location, it floods seasonally. We have to connect and disconnect the, um, uh, the utilities in that area frequently. Uh, we also have additional properties across the street, uh, which are owned by the city. Uh, we have an overflow parking lot for, uh, the park and the boat ramp. And then we have additional lot, uh, next to it, which is, uh, just, uh, un, um, it's green space, but nothing really. We, we go in and mow it, knock it down every once in a while. Um, the properties over here across the street, uh, are to be used for park purposes. Uh, it's specifically identified on the deed, uh, for either park purposes or sewer purposes. I think that's probably not the highest and best use of the, of that space or adjacent use. So it'd probably make a lot of sense to use it for parks, but that is an option, that could happen, we could use it for sewer services. Uh, and so the, the master plan as proposed, again, three main components, the boat ramp, the RV park, uh, the properties across the street. Um, this is obviously a, um, a, a jewel of our park system, it's our only regional park. Uh, it's at the confluence of two major rivers, uh, in our city. It's a tourism destination and, uh, something that we should really put a lot of thought into how we're actually using the space to the best of, um, of, of its ability moving forward. So, uh, staff were proposing moving forward with the master plan. The city commission, um, at the commission work session retreat, uh, which happened in beginning of February, suggested that they would like to evaluate, um, kind of refine the scope of the master plan and, uh, asked for, uh, further conversation. And so we are planning on bringing forward, um, this as a, a talking point at the March twelfth work session with the city commission. Uh, again, I would, um, invite everyone on this group and anyone in the public that has interest in that topic to attend. Um, we'll be giving a little bit of background on again, the, the park, the suggestion from the Oregon State Marine Board, uh, the hydrology study, uh, the main components of the master plan and our proposal moving forward. Yes?
I just want to ask one question for clarification. I, I sensed a tone change in your voice that I haven't heard before relating to the RV park. And it, I picked up mostly negatives. And my understanding is we have a current master plan for that, that has just not been implemented. Number two, I also understand it's really the only thing in the city that operates with a huge profit margin. And so I would think that negates any, uh, small amount of staff time taking down, the ballers or the, you know, the stanchions when it floods. So your tone was kind of, well, we have these issues, but for me, those issues are easily overlooked if it's operating at a huge profit when we have a huge unfunded maintenance issue. I mean, I like what it's giving back to our park system, so I just want to make sure I'm catching this. Is your tone shifting, we don't like the RV park now, or?
No, no, not at all. Uh, the, and my apologies if I came across that way, the, it has many challenges in its current location. So, um, it has a lot of staff time associated with the, the flooding and the ongoing, uh, is it open, is it not? Can we set it up? You know, this last year we, we closed it for, you know, a substantial amount of time because it always floods typically in, you know, January, February, sometimes as early as December. Um, we, we closed it sort of pretty close in that December, you know, like mid-December period because we were starting to see high water, uh, events coming in and it's, it's difficult for staff time, it's difficult for messaging with the public. Um, you know, one of the considerations might be to move the RV park across the street to the properties across the street. Yeah, to, to the sewer, um, and, uh, that way it's.
The issue there, of course, is that, that, uh, south side is heavily sloped, I mean, you probably have to do some major things in order to.
We probably have to do some regrading a little bit. Um, it, the footprint's roughly equivalent, uh, we do have a thirty percent set. Um, the, um, the RV park in its current location, uh, if you look at the footprint to footprint, it, it is fairly transferable. But it, it does, you know, it is, it is revenue generator for sure. Uh, it does take a lot of staff time, uh, we have, um, we have volunteer park hosts that serve there. There's a lot of interviewing of park hosts and interacting with the folks that come there. We had, um, just this last year, um, you know, a couple of major, um, criminal activities that, that happened, assaults. Um, somebody that drove through the barricade with their RV in the middle of the night and, so it's, um, yes, it makes money, um, I'm hoping that I can, uh, through the, um, through the process speak to, and I've asked for Jonathan to, to give me, um, more specific data. I can give you the revenue figures very easily. The true cost of, of what it takes to maintain is, is a little bit more, uh, you know, of, of an issue. Uh, we, we do make, I, I think somewhere in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year annually there, which is substantial.
Revenue?
Revenue. And, uh, we also pay out about twenty thousand in, in taxes for, um, the, uh, transient tax. Uh, and then, you know, all the materials and supplies and staff time and things that are attached to it, so. Yeah, we're hoping to, to give a, a better example of apples out and, you know, it, it does, regardless, it, it does make money for us. And we never, you don't want to give that away. And provides a, a, a unique opportunity for both visitors, tourism, as well as, uh, some of our residents that, uh, just want to get away from the house for a little bit and see what their RVs doing in the, in the off-season, so.
I was gonna also suggest, the demographics are gonna change as the Willamette Falls Legacy Project picks up. You're gonna see a lot of motorhomes driving to Oregon City. This is part of that parking master plan that they're trying to develop in conjunction with bicycling in or taking water taxis in, but it's, uh, I think when we're looking at this overall master planning, we need to keep that in consideration that that park could be used as a, a place for shuttles to start going up, taking people into the Willamette Falls Legacy and that might be some additional parking, that's why I was thinking about the boat ramp going away, those kind of ideas that, um, we can better use that. And I know the demographics will change, it'll get a lot more use at the, when it's not a fishing time of the year, fishing season seems to be the, the generator for a lot. And they, and I think we can look at the rules, maybe even up the price, uh, you know, I think all that. We need to keep the, the RV space and maybe even expand on the idea.
Maybe we could do a garage, RV on the bottom, cars on the top?
There you go, boom.
Go to the RV garage. So we talked about the boat ramp over by where it's currently at, but has there been any discussion about the boat ramp being on the Willamette side?
Uh, there have been, uh, folks that have advocated.
Cause we kind of have a boat ramp when you shut down the RV park, I mean, it's kind of like doubles. It already happens, so there might be some benefit of using the current slope, not.
There are, there are considerations, uh, to be made for, uh, you know, the, the current location versus the other side. Uh, we would have to do another hydrology study on the other side to see which is, uh, does cost something. The, uh, Oregon State Marine Board and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife paid for a majority of the, the expense of the studies. Uh, the Marine Board pays for a majority of the, uh, cost of the, uh, boat ramp, um, installation. And so shifting it to the other side, uh, the Marine Board's not supportive, not that that should be the be all and all of what we do with our properties, but, um, it is something to consider.
Oregon State Marine Board, yeah, who are they?
They're the ones that are gonna.
No, I know who they are, but some of it.
They're, they're the bankers.
Oh, okay.
Um, we, we do have, uh, we, we do have, uh, further upstream at Sportcraft, uh, 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 Willamette, access for, for boat ramps, uh, for boaters, um, and so.
Fifty-five, fifty-five spaces too for parking there. I wouldn't know it was that many, but there's fifty-five available spaces.
Um, and we do have one person for public comment if and when the chair is ready to, to hear that as well.
Poor guy's waited all night.
Certainly, um.
Oh, sorry, uh, Brian Shaw, Mr. Shaw.
Kind of pushing it nine thirty here. Uh, Chair Novak and committee members here, uh, and welcome the new people here, this is great. You're, you're on one of the best committees here in Oregon City here, I, I, I spent ten years on, uh, Park and Rec.
Is that what maybe the best, uh, the best advisory committee in Oregon City, that you were on at one point?
I don't know if it was the original, but, uh, during my time, we actually brought in the property for Wesleyland Park from the school district and I think we actually started the first concert in the park also, so it has a couple memorial moments there for me, so. Um, tonight here, actually, I'm just, uh, we're, uh, I, I belong to an organization called, uh, River Assets, uh, something, something Phil and I filled on there too. And it actually was generated by, uh, Jerry Herman. And, uh, as you know, Jerry is very knowledgeable about this whole area here. Uh, but also River Assets goes clears up to the falls and, and we studied, you know, we've only been in operation for about a year or so and, uh, we've got our eye on several projects, um, like the Eighth, Eighth Street Dock by the courthouse, having a new dock there for, uh, maybe even stern wheelers and stuff to come into and unload and make their way to the, uh, legacy project. Uh, we do work mitigation wise in the cove there, we have on our, uh, committee, a, an environmental person that, uh, uh, helps us, uh, study that cove project there to make sure we have quality water in there. But, um, the, this, the Clackamette Park area has been on our, uh, in our sights and, um, we decided to move that up here yesterday when I'm meeting, so we moved that up because we know that the work session is coming up for the city commission. So basically what I'm here tonight for is to let you guys know, there's another group that would like to, uh, kind of partner with you guys, I guess, so we can all have the same input. And, uh, we'll be at the city commission also, the work session. Usually at the work session, there's, uh, they don't really take input from audience, but I'm not sure how they're gonna run this one, so. Uh, but, uh, encourage you folks to be, as long as you want to be there for that too, and we're gonna be there and, and, um, yeah.
When is that gonna be?
What was the date?
March, March twelfth, Tuesday, March twelfth.
Oh, the same time as the work session, yeah, yeah.
So, um, yeah, so, I, I mean, I know all the history about this project here, so that boat ramp, uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I know they're suggesting three hundred feet from the existing one. And, uh, I'm saying that could be a hundred feet away and that way you could still use the parking lot and the restrooms there and not, uh, interrupt that park area as much as they're considering, cause you put that, a new boat ramp in, then you angle it correctly, it's gonna be a lot better, but keep that existing ramp there for pedestrian use for the, the, you know, kayaks and things like that. Cause that's, it's kind of a nice beach, you might say, for pedestrian beach as far as what we have to work with there. The RV park, the, the first question we always kind of ask is, should we be in the RV bus, RV park, RV park business? You know, and now that we know that it's kind of a generator, a little revenue there and stuff, so, um, uh, but the big deal now is obviously it's part of this tourism plan for, uh, Oregon City because, uh, you know, that's part of what people are able to accommodate, uh, themselves overnight there and things, so that's part of the tourism. So there's a lot of moving parts here for this and, uh, it's a, just, you just look at that right now and know that, uh, you know, that we, we, uh, we need to pay some attention to it. Uh, and fortunately, um, that part, the empty property next to McDonald's, um, I got a call from the developer that's doing the, um, cove project phase two. And, uh, he said, well, what about the property next to Firestone and across from it? I said, yeah, those are, um, available if you think you can build on those studies. He says, well, how about that property next to McDonald's center? I said, that's awfully much, you know, because we've got plans for that and even though there's been one or two people on the city commission that said, well, you know, what a nice big, uh, we could sell that and make lots of money and put a nice big hotel on there and stuff, but my premise has always been when you come across that ninety-nine bridge from Gladstone, you know, and you look over to the right there and you see right down that river and you see the falls and that bridge and everything, you know you're in Oregon City now, so that's, uh, that's why I'm always saying, we've got to save that property and just bank it for, for the city. You know, there's, um, anyway, that's all I got here, I know where you guys are running late here and stuff, so. But anyway, we look forward to kind of working with you guys, uh, as we go along here and stuff on this project too. So, and maybe other projects as we come up here, so, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item seven H, other general business.
Uh, nothing on my side.
I just have, I just have one topic. Thirty seconds. Uh, it's customary for the chair to give a report to the city commission annually and I was the last one to do it three years ago. So you might want to consider that this year.
Awesome. Put that on my list to do.
I, I think it's good for us to.
At your last meeting, you make that, that's what.
But it, 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 you'd need to be an advocate for parks and, and there have been times where various commissions kind of forgot we were here and I think being in front of them, reminding them of, of our goals, if you just adopt them, it's the perfect time to go rehash what you're working for in the future and what you've just accomplished.
Good suggestion, thank you. All right, member reports, uh, starting on my right. All right, member reports, starting on my right, Mr. Daniels.
You've heard from me enough, I have none.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Nothing for him. I went to the daddy-daughter dance that the city puts on and I will just tell you, it amazes me every year. Staff does an outstanding job and they should absolutely be commended. Phil went for the first time ever, finally.
Yeah, I got my dance on, yeah.
And, and your daughters, but.
Did we have a video of that one?
I didn't take any, I wasn't.
Phil?
No, I didn't take any.
It's like when you visit Vegas, right? What happens at daddy-daughter dance stays at daddy-daughter dance.
It's a very professionally run thing and you should know that your park staff puts it on each year and they don't just sit still and do the same thing as the previous year, they're always trying to improve it. It's, it's worth the money you pay, it's reasonably priced, it's always, I think she said there was twenty-something people on a waiting list to go. I mean, I bookmark it in November, like, say for example, tickets go on sale November first. It fills up by middle of December. So Abernathy Center was great and the food was great and it's just a really good thing that they do for the community once a year, so. That was my park-related thing this month.
Thank you. Nice to hear. Let's see, I've been doing my tour of parks, Atkinson Park, one thing I wanted to mention, was mentioning it earlier, I'm seeing more and more neighbors there, which is nice, but it's not the house, but I believe it's the restrooms are retagged.
Yeah, we just cleaned that up recently, last couple of days.
Awesome. Yes, thank you for doing that, I think I was there Saturday, it was either Saturday or Sunday I was there. Other than that, Oregon City Parks Foundation, we're planning for another spray and Ivy Pool. Still need to work out the scheduling, but that's going to be coming up, so, it's the latest on that. It's all of good.
I do have something to say. On my interview, you asked me about Park Place, I had no clue, so I personally went and found it and toured the whole area.
Very good, thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
I always, that bothered me, like.
You're welcome to come to Pilgrim Run, our park was just in the ride.
I was right, I didn't.
Developed it.
I looked it up, I'm telling you.
Clean slate, you can work from a clean slate now.
Yeah, just one thing, not specifically parks related, but the, not related at all, but Great Oregon City Watershed Council is putting up these stream signs, which I've mentioned before. We're actually going to start a process of naming the ones that don't have names and getting involved, so. Or taking probably a lesson from what you do in terms of, or what we do here, I should say, in terms of naming parks, applying it and then trying to get public input in terms of the names, some names we can put forward and of course volunteering other names from people that might be interested. And I got some discussions with Phil regarding that.
Well, after the work session this evening, I'm glad I interviewed a month ago. These were, these were really top-notch candidates, I'm sorry we couldn't have both of them on the, on the committee, but at least I'm delighted to be here.
Glad you're here.
I would like to make a comment. I just stated when I said that the Bina Vista House, there was a motion made and passed at the Oregon City Parks Foundation to forward five thousand dollars to the TAF, the electric. And Joyce, who must be watching tonight, corrected me on my text and that was a loan of thirty-five hundred dollars to be matched by MNA fifteen hundred, so. It's technicality, but it's still, there's the obligation and room for more donations.
A slight technicality and I'm confident it's going to be, come through. And don't forget pie day, March fourteenth, the library, six-thirty PM.
Right. You buy a pie and that takes care of one month of electricity to keep the house warm.
Yes, and you can, you can donate.
One pie a month? How much is a pie a month? Come buy a pie from my house, I'll price it, eat my house for a month.
They might be considered donations at all going to the Oregon City Parks Foundation.
Good cause. Staff reports.
Yeah, and I'll keep this brief, recreation report you got through email, the Metro Park and Nature Open House, they're having a open house coming up this next month, March nineteenth at the VFW. Thank you VFW for hosting. They'll be giving updates on their sites related to Oregon City, Sunil Creek, Kenema, Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Additionally, they'll be talking about their possible bond that will be coming up this November, as well as how they use their previous bonding authorities to increase the footprint of our parks and nature programs offered through Metro.
Is that March eighteenth again?
Yeah, March nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay.
Five-thirty at the VFW Hall.
Okay. Any future agenda items?
I have none.
No? I think we have a few things kind of ongoing, so it's probably not great.
I will ask maybe, Doug, you had made mention of doing a presentation on behalf of the NRC or the Great Oregon City Watershed Council a couple meetings ago. And I just, maybe we can connect if you want to do that in March or one of the upcoming meetings.
I'd be pleased.
Okay.
Okay. Our next scheduled meeting is seven PM, March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And they adjourned our meeting, thank you.